Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, November 14th. We apologize for the delay. We had a little technical difficulty, but we would like to thank our MIS department, in particular Rowan Watkins and Leah Ekstrom, for their assistance in getting us started. If not, we would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we get started this morning, are there any adjustments to our agenda? Any additions or adjustments to our agenda? Any changes to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now have our public comment period. This is an opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board. I do not see anyone this morning here in the commissioners' room. Have any commissioners or administrator received any public comment by email?
No ma'am.
All right. We'll move forward at this time, then, to our consent agenda. And are there any items a commissioner wishes to pull? Hearing or seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support for our consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, at this point, we are moving forward with our Highway Department, and we have Highway Engineer Robbie Haas with us this morning to talk about the Alfred Creek Bridge Replacement Bond Agreement. Good morning, Robbie.
Good morning, everybody. So as we're becoming more familiar with these bond agreements, if we get state bridge bonds from the state of Minnesota, there's obviously a lengthy agreement that they go through. Basically, it allows us, if we say yes, to accept the money and do a bridge. And so instead of a local, you know, locally funded $764,000 project, we have a, you know, $88,000 contribution or, you know, match from us, and so we were awarded $675, a little over $675,000, on bridge bonds for this project. So it's down on Alfred Creek Road, just replacing a deficient culvert with a bridge, properly sized, you know, how they should be. Anybody have any questions, I guess?
Any questions or comments for Robbie? If not, is there a motion to approve and sign the agreement and the resolution?
I'll make that motion to approve and sign that resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you for your good work.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're going to move on now to Public Health and Human Services, and we have Martina Johnson here with us. She is the Supervisor of Adult and Home and Community-Based Services. That's a long title, Martina. And she's here with a request for a letter of support. Good morning, Martina.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I have been working on this project probably for the last nine months, but have been thinking about it for many, many years. Back in April, I applied for a Live Well at Home grant through the Minnesota Department of Human Services. These grants are funds that are set aside to support people as they're aging in the community. The goal is really to keep people in their homes for as long as possible. So they're looking at projects that can contribute towards that goal. And my project is the purchase of an ADA-compliant, standard-sized van that can be shared amongst agencies driven by volunteer drivers to transport people, anyone in Cook County. So it would not have, like, a set route. It would not have set hours. It would be based on need and the driver availability, transporting people to and from medical appointments, and eventually doing more than medical appointments, transporting people to get groceries or to take part in social events. So it's, the hope is to expand this beyond just that initial set, the population set. So I did, I was selected to receive a Live Well at Home grant to purchase this vehicle. I believe we will be getting $39,300 to put towards the cost of a vehicle. I've also been able to apply for and have been selected to receive North Shore Healthcare Foundation grant monies to purchase this van. The process has been long in working with DHS, and we don't have that money quite yet. So as I've been waiting for that to come, I've also been looking into other opportunities, and I came across an opportunity with MINDOTs moving Greater Minnesota forward. They had a cohort that started back in September that they were accepting applications for. I applied for that and was selected to take part in their first cohort. It is focusing on shared mobility projects in Greater Minnesota. So I have been taking part in that program since September. It's a, we meet once a week for four hours each week, and we're working on really being able to communicate about our projects, creating a lean canvas, creating a one-page document that talks about our project. So it's just really helping with the foundation of this is the project and helping to get people to buy into what we're doing. So with that cohort, I have been connected with a gentleman named Elliot McFadden. He is with the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and he is applying for a grant through their MINDOT Office of Transit and Active Transportation. They are applying for a Federal Highway Administration, they're applying to the Federal Highway Administration to become a regional capacity builder under the Thriving Communities Program, and he would like my project to be a part of that grant application. So what I'm asking for today is your support in signing this letter that will be sent off to the Federal Highway Administration in support of this grant. What this grant would do is it'd be facilitated by MINDOT. We would not have to handle any of the funds, and they would provide additional support to all of these projects that they, that are included for planning, strategy, research, actually implementing your project, looking into funding sources, applying for more grants. So it would be a great opportunity for us. So in summary, I'm just here to request your support in continuing to move forward with this.
Are there any questions or comments for Martina? Commissioner Starley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sounds like a great idea. Could you tell me, or us, what's the difference then between this van and what Arrowhead, already provides?
So Arrowhead Transit, they have a bus, and you have to have a special license to be able to drive that bus. This van is going to be a Ford Transit, so it'll be a van that anyone can drive. You don't need a special license to be able to drive it. It will be able to get into the rural parts of the county that Arrowhead Transit currently can't. They have set routes, so they mainly are driving within Grand Marais. They also go up to Grand Portage, but they don't really go off of Highway 61. And we have a whole population of people that do not live along that corridor that we need to be able to serve. So it's the getting to those people that are more rural, getting to them when they need it versus within the set hours of Arrowhead Transit. And also, we will be, we will have the ability to bill insurance, if that's a benefit of a person's insurance. So that, that would be something that's different from Arrowhead Transit. They also only go to Duluth one day a week, and this van, you know, based on driver availability and the person's needs, would be able to go anytime that the person has the appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
Yeah, I'm wondering about who owns the van, who takes care of the insurance and liability?
Cook County will own the van, so it'll be a part of our fleet.
And when you say share it with other agencies, who are those other agencies?
So we are working with Care Partners of Cook County. They have a volunteer driver group, and we will be creating, with the Live Well at Home grant, we will be creating contracts and memorandums of understanding so that it's all appropriate and legal, and we will also be providing, like, set trainings for the drivers. We'll have policies and procedures that they have to follow when they're driving the van. So the first partner is Care Partners of Cook County, and we want to expand beyond that because we know that there might be a need with the hub, there might be a need with the hospital and care center in the future. Grand Portage has a van, but they have also expressed being open to utilizing our van if, if they need to. So it's, we're just starting with Care Partners right now, but we're looking to grow that beyond just that one partner.
And who is going to be responsible for the volunteer organization?
That will be done underneath our In-Home Support Program that we currently have set up, and also Care Partners. So they are really an integral part of this in the planning and the developing of policies and procedures, and then actually implementing. So that's what we'll be working on in the coming months, is establishing how that will look.
And I think my next question is for Brady, then, as far, or maybe our administrator, as far as insurance of covering volunteers, how does that work with having volunteers?
They're studying the contract right now. They'll give some advice on that.
Okay.
It has to, yeah, the definition is authorized volunteer. We'll all have to explain that in the context of this for us, so we're working on it.
Commissioner White, you had your hand up.
It had to do with the volunteers, and how do you know, how do you get the volunteers, and then what's the criteria for being a volunteer? So that's all.
All right, great. Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, I don't have questions, but I just want to applaud your efforts here. I know it has been a very long process, and transportation has been a critical need for many people in our community for a long time, and just with the limited services we have, and having to get to Duluth, and limited transportation, and as you stated, all the inland properties or residents that are not on the highway have kind of been out of the AOA loop for, for, for transport, or Arrowhead Transit pool. So very complicated and a lot of players, and I really appreciate how thoroughly you're looking at this from all the different potential liabilities, but then also those partnerships and how we could really leverage all of those. So thank you very much for, for working on this, and we'll keep our fingers crossed as far as how it all works out. I know it's more than luck, it's hard work, so.
And Martina has put in so many hours over such a long period to, to work towards this, and I had a chance, I looked at the slides that were provided by Elliot McFadden of the Greater Minnesota Shared Mobility Coordination Group, and I'm just really impressed with the project, and it can just do so much for our community. And when this was added to our agenda, I want Martina to know, I had two emails that came from constituents up the trail who were so excited that there would be something for them because they don't live in greater Grand Marais, shall we say. And so they were really very thrilled that somebody was thinking of them. So I want to thank you for that. It means a lot to our entire county. Any other questions or concerns?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one question. So if the MINDOT grant application is successful, what, what steps would we take to actually procure the vehicle, and would it be subject to additional board approval, or how's that going to work?
The vehicle is, the purchase of that vehicle is wrapped up in the Live Well at Home grant, which we've already been selected for. So we're just working through the contract right now to ensure that our MCIT consultants are on board and that everything is, is appropriate with that. Once that is finalized, then we can start the work, and actually, I've already, I already have a vehicle that has been selected and can be delivered to us. I've been talking with Brady and Brian Silence, just to coordinate that all. They will deliver the van to us. We will likely, they're saying it's mobility works out of the cities. They specialize in these types of vehicles. They can deliver the van to us now, but we would not be receiving reimbursement from the state, or, not reimbursement, but these grant dollars from the state until January. So we likely will hold off on the purchase of the vehicle until then. This, the grant through MINDOT is really to continue to flesh out this project and possibly expand it and, and help it to be sustainable. So it's, it's taking the project that we already have, that I am working on with my time as a supervisor, trying to find time to do that, and getting this extra support from these transportation experts who will support me, and they will do a lot of the work that I don't have time to do to really enhance this product or project. So it's, it's, we're, the van is already something that we can, we will have the funds to purchase. The, this MINDOT grant is just extra support coming in to help strengthen it, strengthen the project.
All right. Commissioner White.
Does this van, is it, have a wheelchair lift on it?
It does.
And is handicapped accessible throughout? Like, however, I don't know what handicapped accessible van looks like inside, but I would imagine it's set up for people that have mobility issues.
Yes, so it will have a lift. You will open up the back of it, and the lift is hydraulic, so it'll come out. It's something that anybody can operate, so you don't need to have really intense training to be able to operate it. It sounds like you just push it and it comes out. And then the person can be wheeled in, and they will have places where their wheelchair can be secured in the back of the van. And then there'll, there will also be a seat in front of that where anybody that's riding along with the person can sit, or they can sit in the passenger seat in the front of the van. So it will meet the ADA compliance requirements.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, and I just want to point out, the, I mean, I guess you pointed it out already, but I want to say it again, that this both can be helpful for us and our community as far as this grant is concerned, but then also us joining that grant also helps MINDOT in, in kind of broadening the scope beyond Cook County. If this is, this is certainly not unique to Cook County, this, this challenge. Rural Minnesota in general is having this, this same issue. Arrowhead Transit does get into many other places outside of Cook County. Cook County is maybe unique in that aspect, but, but it's still a challenge elsewhere. And so it's, it's, it's a two-way street here, and it's, it's kind of a win-win. So not only do we benefit, but we're also helping the rest of the state, which, and region, I see as a, as a huge, huge plus, really, really doing all we can to, to help our neighbors, too.
Other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Commissioner Hawkins?
So is it December that we will hear if this gets awarded to MINDOT?
Good question. I'm not sure when that is.
I was, I went to the website and read all the information. I'm thinking it was before the end of the year. I'm just asking that you send out an email saying we got it, or no, we did not?
Absolutely, yes.
So I don't have to wait a year to find out?
No, I will let you know.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, good question. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for all your hard work on this. We are really excited about this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martina. Moving on in our agenda at this point, we'll move on to our MIS discussion, and we have Rowan Watkins here with us this morning again, and thank you for making our livestream possible.
Good morning. Madam Chair, Commissioners, today I have a request to approve a hosting agreement with Minnesota County's Information Systems, or EMSIS. EMSIS is a joint powers entity that has hosted our AS400 information since 2016. AS400 is a unique IBM mainframe. The reason I mention it is because it has increasingly become the standard to enter into these types of hosting agreements as a cost-effective way to work with these systems. Instead of us owning one of those IBM mainframes ourselves and then paying the people who know how to run it because it is so specialized, collectively counties have agreed to have entities like EMSIS do that for them, where they, they see a, a cost-effective way to do that. EMSIS also provides a lot of other pieces in terms of support and security that really make it financially beneficial for us to do it that way. They host our equipment, they back it up, they keep our equipment on, at an off-site location, they implement all of the security requirements. So the off-site location, if the building where our equipment was to burn down, EMSIS would be responsible and have a plan to restore our data onto a whole new hardware within really reasonable timeframes, day to a week or two tops. And the information that it holds, again, it's our property tax, it's KAMA, our computer-aided mass appraisal, the information that the assessor's office uses, it's our payroll information. If you're familiar with IFS, it's our accounting information that multiple departments use, as well as integrated with, or cost accounting that happens at the Highway Department. So it's really, it's, it's everywhere across the organization. And this contract is to renew those services again until the next equipment replacement schedule is the term of the contract, and they are doing six-year replacements on the equipment. And the price that we pay for these services, again, it's a joint powers agreement, we are a voting member and have been since 1976, I believe? Goes back a long ways.
Something like that.
But collectively, the, the group agrees on the equipment replacement schedules and services that we need, and then the amount that we pay is allocated based on our, our share of those services or equipment that we, we use. That's high level, what it is and what we do and what, what we're looking for. I would stand for any questions, if you have any, on disagreement.
Commissioner White.
How many counties are in this collective?
So there's, there's 12 full members and four associate members, and in this contract specifically, EMSIS provides a lot of different services. The one that we're talking about today is the hosting and support associated with hosting our data. 10 counties are a part of that, and so we're one of 10 who are expected to renew and sign this agreement for hosting. But the larger joint powers agreement, 12 full members, four associate.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Rowan. Are you our rep, then, for EMSIS or voting member?
I am the alternate. I believe Brady is our...
We tend to, they'll, you'll see various members from different counties. They like a mix. Some counties have their MIS, some have their assessor, some have their auditor, and so it varies, and some other positions even, so. And we, and this will transfer over. It's been the assessor at various times, it's been the MIS director, so I'm expecting. Rowan has gone to several meetings, let's say, over the last three years or so. I'm expecting he'll, he'll take over, at least for a number of years. Thank you.
Question I have is, what's the difference between a full membership and an associate membership?
I assume, but I don't know. I'd have to read into the bylaws, I guess. I assume it's the level of participation. Brady, do you know?
Yeah, I think tax is, is the backbone of this. It's the vast bulk of it, and those that are in tax, and I don't know if it requires anything else to be considered full member, but that's, yeah, that is essentially it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to request approving the hosting agreement with MCIS. Commissioner White.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement, the hosting contract.
Support?
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rowan.
Have a good day, Rowan. Next item on our agenda, item number seven, is Land Services, and we have Neva Maxwell with us this morning. Good morning, Neva.
Good morning.
So Neva is here today to talk about a number of items. First of all, the replacement recycling trailers.
Yes, so this is a recommendation to accept the quote from big rig companies for the purchase of three 2016 Great Dane 53-foot semi-trailers to replace three existing trailers from the recycling program fleet at the total cost of $72,289.14, the total amount of which would come from the existing old transfer station fund, which has been maintained and utilized for this purpose and will not have any impact on the existing budget. I would be more than happy to read the full report if you would like. This is from Tim Nelson. But essentially, you know, we maintain this fleet of recycling trailers to be those satellite cardboard locations, then also to take the recycling down to Proctor. And so our new hauler, Dean Bergland, reviewed the fleet and found that three of those were not really roadworthy anymore, so they need to be retired. And then these three new used from 2016 trailers are in good enough shape that we can use them for our purposes, and we get a pretty good lifespan because of the type of use that these trailers get. So Tim has been maintaining this fund, so this is a budgeted item.
Any questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes, I do. And you might not be able to answer this, and so I'll refer to our county administrator. So in June, we bought a trailer, right? I am just totally confused by the trailer situation at the recycling center.
The trailer we bought in June is one of the multi-bin things that we have at the remote drop-off locations. These are actually semi-trailers.
I thought it was a 2016 Great Dane semi-trailer, but I could be wrong, because, yes, I did find pro, pro-bin on there, too.
As I recall, Commissioner, it was actually one of the multi, it was actually a...
That's why I'm confused of every, we constantly are buying trailers, and I'm confused of which ones we're buying, which goes back to, I had asked before, equipment replacement list, kind of like what the Highway Department does, because they had this problem of coming before the board, oh, we have a truck that needs to be replaced, and we hadn't planned for it. I see the recycling trailers at the, the trailers, whichever kind they are, at the recycling center, in the same kind of situation. And I'd asked before, do we have a plan? Do we, have we come up with a schedule so that we don't buy three all at once? Whoops, who didn't know they weren't roadworthy until we got a new hauler? What made that happen? And do we, now we're going to have three in one year that are going to last 20 years? 15 years, depending? I don't know. But I prefer, it's fine to buy three in one year if you've been planning of how to do that. I don't, this fund that we have set aside is not going to last forever if we don't have a plan. So I'm back to requesting that we... last forever if we don't have a plan. So, I'm back to requesting that we come up with an equipment replacement plan for the recycling services we provide, and that includes not just the trailers, not whatever kind semi-pro-bin, or the other equipment in that building, the grapple hooks and all that stuff. I did try to find a list of all that, and it was really confusing because I don't understand what it is. But it would be nice to have a list like the Highway Department has of, "This is our fleet, this is what we need to replace, and this is how we're budgeting for those replacements." So, I'm just going to make that request again.
I hear your question. The way that Tim Nelson has been managing this is, he budgets $20,000 a year for equipment replacement. That goes into this fund, and so he is, on an ongoing basis, budgeting for things. And then, you know, the way we've done it is he's just used his judgment to determine when things need to be replaced. And we have ample funds to make that happen. So, if there's a desire to handle that differently, we certainly can, but I would say the way we've been doing things has been working pretty well.
Commissioner Mills, you had your hand.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it says that there's a specific fund for the replacement of equipment, and that $20,000 goes in every year, and there's $400,000 in it currently, and, you know, the three of these are far less than that. So, I was going to say, it seems like exactly what you're asking, maybe not exactly, mostly what you're asking for is happening. It's just that you... My understanding is, it sounds like you want a much more detailed and quantitative schedule, and I think what Director Nelson has been trying to do is kind of be flexible and to try to get as much life out of the equipment as possible, which of course the Highway Department does, too, but it's just a different approach, I think. But I think the reason maybe it hadn't been identified before this is just the previous hauler thought that those were fine. That would be my guess. When someone says not roadworthy, there is a point when that happens, right? And up until that point, it can be kind of a judgment call. So, I applaud Mr. Bergman for identifying the deficiencies and approaching the county to take care of it, and applaud Director Nelson for having these funds set aside and being able to replace things as needed. There have been items, though, that were not budgeted for before, and I think that's when the conversation came up, is when we had these unexpected equipment issues. And that can be pretty hard when something goes bad like that, and those are pricey items. So, it caught all of our attention, but this seems to be right in line with what we want, but that's just me.
Commissioner White, you had a question?
Roadworthy is not a subjective situation. It's objective. We've got MINDAT, there's oversight on... Particularly, this is a commercial trailer that's being pulled down the road, and the liability of having air brakes or an axle or something going awry. You can push it to a point, but this is not... It's not a private person trying to make it to the post office and back on bald tires because it's just me type thing. This is, puts the county at risk. It puts everyone on the road at risk. So, that's that. But I agree with Commissioner Hawkins, is that this is great because Tim's been doing this. Tim will not be here forever. We need to have, like anything, we talk about being able to continue without disruptions, and there should be an identified process in place, and knowing what the lifespan is of the forklift they have and of the... Whatever those crushers are, that should all be in place. And I'm glad he's doing what he's doing, but I believe it needs to be spelled out for the next person. I mean, no one lasts forever around here.
I think we're all saying...
Except Brady can't leave.
I think we're all saying the same thing, but just more detail is required. But no, I agree, the subjective thing. Maybe we should have MINDAT inspected. I mean, I assume they did, you know? That's where... Is it a private hauler who has the say, or is it MINDAT that has the say? And maybe last year, MINDAT did inspect it, and it was all right, but now this year, it's not, because there is a point where that line is drawn. It is objective. You're absolutely right.
Neva, do you have some comments you'd like to share with us?
Partially. I'm going to be sensitive here, because I'm not the qualified professional, so put that asterisk there. My understanding is that these trailers can get pulled over by the fleet inspector with MINDAT, right? And then they have to check and make sure, "Oh, that's... You're in trouble." So, that's a part of it. As Tim and I were talking about this, you know, the option of do nothing, don't buy these trailers, is that these trailers are taken out of the road-traveling fleet, and so, you know, they could just be the ones that just do really small trips. You know, they're not the ones that take the stuff down to Proctor. But then you have three less trailers in your fleet, and it takes a lot more negotiation of what trailers are where and which ones can serve that function. And then, "Oh, that trailer's not in the right location. Oh, we've got a recycling backup," you know, is just giving that seamless service of being able to maintain that program. Yeah, I've also sat in here during the Highway Department's presentation of all of their equipment. It is very impressive. So, I think that is really a well-received notion. It doesn't seem out of the character of the ability to maintain that type of list. I think some of these are just that flexibility of how much life you can squeeze out of an item. That's what kind of makes this a little bit more wishy-washy, is that, "Ah, maybe we could get a little bit further." It's not like kaput, we had three trailers just fall apart overnight. It's just that a new hauler came and he said, you know, "We really shouldn't be taking these down to Proctor." So, that's probably why this is all at once being requested.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. Commissioner?
And the key thing is, MINDAT. MINDAT pulls people over. And so, they don't say, "It's okay today. You just go and you promise us you'll take care of it." It doesn't work that way, so it's good to be ahead of that, so...
Commissioner Hawkins?
I totally get the safety part of it. Yes, we have failing trailers. Yes, they need to be replaced. I'm just an advocate for, I don't like surprises. Tell me, "Hey, we might have to replace this in the next year, heads up. Not a problem." But my other question is, one for you. So, what happens to the old trailers? Do we give them to somebody? Do we get any money for them?
Yeah. Tim said that we kind of have two options. The plan was to put them out for silent bid, and then the other option is that we can see if the Highway Department needs them for storage.
Okay. And my next question, and I think is for Brady, the landfill replacement monies, $400,000. Now, it was my understanding that wasn't to be necessarily only used for recycling center equipment. Do we have a policy on what that money is going... I mean, didn't we pay for recycling center building improvements out of that fund also?
Yes.
Okay.
But that is the general policy. I don't know that the board has ever formally adopted a policy on it, other than approving the list at some time, including, it's called transfer station. So, there hasn't been anything formal since then. It's been kind of an informal policy, to use that rather than budget each year. But he is budgeting. In the last few years, I mean, we were $600,000 in that years ago, and now, as we've gotten lower, he's starting to budget $20,000 to $30,000 a year.
Which is important.
Which is important. It's sustaining it right now, but to your point, yeah, I think you could use some more, a little more analysis, especially with somebody else who's going to come in.
Right. Maybe $20,000 a year is fine, and it covers with what we already have. But I'll just, heads up, when I knew about this $400,000 and knowing our capital improvement plan and that we have deferred maintenance all over, I was in my head thinking some of that money there doesn't have to be bonded for. It can be used to replace, you know, fix some of the issues at the recycling center. So, I do not want Tim Nelson to think that's his equipment replacement fund 100%. That's where I'm coming from, and why I would like to see an equipment replacement plan. So, I'm done. Thank you.
Neva?
I just, I have Tim Nelson giving me a little bit of feedback over Teams, because he is monitoring the livestream. He says, "We've maintained this fund for 25 years in its current form, and we do have a replacement list, but we do maintain equipment longer than expected. So, this in no way impacts the annual budget, other than the standard $20,000 to $30,000 per year." So, I think the point he kind of wanted to add is like, we do have a replacement list, but we're trying to get more life than what that replacement list schedule is.
I totally understand. Got rationale.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you for that, and thank you, Tim. I know you're listening out there. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the quote from big rig companies for the purchase of the three 2016 Great Dane semi-trailers.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starlee. We have a motion and support. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Neva.
Thank you.
Now, we have a conditional use permit that Neva will share with us, which is up at the intersection of South Shore Drive and Devil Track Road.
Yes, thank you. So, this is an item forwarded from the Planning Commission. This is a recommendation to approve the conditional use permit for four-unit residential structure and a garage with living quarters, to be used as dwelling units, both for their staff and for the general public for rentals. The findings supporting this approval are that the request is compatible with the land use guide plan, and this location is well-suited to provide five residential units. Mr. Christensen is requesting to put this two-unit dwellings up. We did receive one written opposition from a neighboring property owner, and they also had their representative comment opposed to the request. But ultimately, there was nobody present at the Planning Commission to speak to the request, either for or against, and the Planning Commission had a good discussion. They determined this was a really good location for a denser housing location and to provide some housing for people. Those comments are in your staff packets also. The ultimate motion was a unanimous approval, recommendation with three conditions attached, that the property is in conformity with the septic requirements, that outdoor lighting is downcast, and there's adequate parking spaces for the use.
Any questions for Neva? I would just like to share also that there was discussion about access to Devil Track Road, and actually, the roadway is going to go into South Shore Drive, and then you would turn from South Shore Drive onto Devil Track Road. So, there's no additional entrance being created on Devil Track. Other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the conditional use permit for Mr. Corey Christensen.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And now on to Temperance Trails, and I see that in addition to Neva, we have Jason Hale here, so we may wind up asking him to come to the microphone if there are questions directed to him.
Thank you. So, this is a... I haven't proposed one of these type of requests to you before, so I'll give a little context. So, I'm currently processing the conditional use permit for the planned unit development for Temperance Trails. It would be a 22-unit residential development, essentially, just on the backside of Birch Grove School. And this is an HRA-sponsored project. And so, as I was reviewing our ordinance requirements for planned unit developments, the subdivision ordinance is very clear that if a subdivision like this, the 22-unit residential development, if it's not directly accessing off of a county or a state road, that the commissioners must grant approval for that private road access before the Planning Commission can review the conditional use permit request. So, when I was reading that, I was like, "It's kind of putting the cart before the horse," because you guys haven't seen this conditional use permit request, but this is what the ordinance requires. The ordinance states that it's about access, so making sure that there is legal access. So, essentially, before the Planning Commission even holds the public hearings for this conditional use permit request, you guys need to bet that this is even a legally viable access location. And also, I kind of surmise that it's also about this road even being adequate enough to support the proposed use. You know, if somebody's just kind of proposing this little skinny driveway that's going through someone's private property, that would be a point for us to say, "Well, you actually need to put a road in there to support this development." So, that's kind of what I've gathered from this. So, I ran this past Jason Hale with the HRA, who's here today, as well as Robbie Haas, our highway engineer. Robbie didn't have any concerns about Good Neighbor Hill Road being able to support a 22-unit development. It's a pretty short segment. It's like less than a quarter mile until you get to Highway 61. The alternative to this is that this development just accesses directly up Highway 61, which would then require another crossing over the bike trail and another Highway 61 entrance, which would not be probably a preferred alternative. And this route does avoid wetland impacts to access on the north side of the... East side of the development. And I guess the last thing to add is that Jason has been working on an easement, which that draft language is in the packets, to make sure that legal access is in place. And then this is slated for the Planning Commission to review the conditional use permit on its December agenda.
Thank you, Neva. I'd like to ask Commissioner Starlee if she's had an opportunity to speak at the township about this.
Yes, I did last week at the TOFTI Township meeting and asked if anybody there had any questions. I mean, because we're so familiar with that land behind the school, and it comes out at a very short portion to Highway 61. There will be a few neighbors above, but nobody has objected to me or to the township or anything so far. But then you have to have the meeting, too, you know? So, who knows at that meeting? I just don't think there's going to be any opposition to any of this. It has been on the books for so long that we're just really happy that, you know, the day is here, that we can maybe start thinking about the development of that land, so...
Absolutely.
And if it were to come out in another way, it would impinge upon Birch Grove School, too, to the west, and I wouldn't want to see that.
Absolutely. Are there any questions for Jason Hale about the project? Commissioner White?
Oh, all right. Tell me, 22 units, single, one bedroom, two bedrooms, five bedrooms? What do we got here?
I'm being deposed. Okay. Commissioner, there are a mix. Right now, the plan is to, and Neva can attest to this, and by the way, thank you very much for the great overview of the project and the situation. Right now, the plan is 22 to 24, depending. A number of those are slated to be side-by-side ownership townhomes. That was from some conversation with me and with some local real estate folks. There's a demand for single-level living with attached garage ownership opportunities. There's not a lot of that here. So, we think it could be a great marrying of families and retired community folks who can live in that space. So, single-family dwellings, two-bed, one-and-a-half bath, for example, is the entry level, what we're planning, and there, at least a quarter of the lots will be that. That's part of the agreement with the HRA. We wanted to make sure there's some buying opportunity for new families or for entry-level homes. The rest of them will be a mix of three-bedroom-plus homes or these side-by-side townhomes. So, it's going to be a range. And some of that, of course, will change, subject to what people actually want to buy. So, this builder, this developer's not going in to develop the land, as we see throughout the county, in places where a developer will come in, run the electric, for example, put in a driveway, and then try to sell five-acre lots. That's not the plan here. They want to build the project out. They're not going to be selling lots for development. They're going to be selling houses to be built. So, they're planning on building a couple of speculative houses to have people walk through them and then do pre-sales as much as possible. So, again, if the demand is for more two bedrooms, or three bedrooms, or four bedrooms, they will build that for who wants them. Anything else?
No.
Commissioner Mills?
Just for perspective, I think it's important for all of us to keep in mind what those entry-level costs will be.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, the agreement has, requires that those homes are at least two-bedroom, one full bath, and that they can be listed for $290 or less. And I know that that's a high sticker price. And I know that that's a high sticker price for a lot of folks, but when you, I mean, good luck finding a new home for under $300,000 in Cook County. So.
Or a used one.
Yeah, or a used one, for that matter. So that was the sort of, because of the scale, because it's 25%, they can sort of amortize some of those costs over the other homes that they will be building. That was the sort of negotiation piece. So yeah, thank you, Commissioner. The rest of them, the market's going to dictate it, but we suspect it's going to be between 290 and about 420. Somewhere in that range is likely the, the range of cost.
It's going to take a while for my eyebrows to go down.
Not to mention 8% interest rates. So yeah.
They went down.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner? I'd be happy to answer them.
Just thank you for your explanation. We appreciate that. And it's great for the public to hear that as well.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an access route.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm so upset that Tim Nelson isn't here and we can't just take a break because he's ready to walk in. Would any commissioners like to take a break at this point in time? I just want to check. All right, I'm seeing some nods. We're going to take a, let's take a seven-minute break, and that'll put us back here at 9:35. Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason. Doesn't she look short? You look pretty, um, peppy. You look like Jana. Walk into the radio station, or you call the radio. I've got another pledge. And you, missy? I was watching something, some mindless cop show or series on TV, and there was a little girl, I think this is what I'm remembering, but she looked exactly like you. Her face, she was probably like eight or nine. She was a character in this. I mean, it was such a. I don't know. She was very sweet, however, but the face, I'm thinking, she works in The Courthouse. But exactly like you. But I couldn't tell you what I was watching or anything that the movie, it wasn't worth.
Well, if you think of it, you'll have to let me know so I can take a peek.
Yeah. Yes. Have you ever encountered somebody that looks like you in your own eyes? Like this is, this person looks?
Yeah, actually, yes.
It's unusual.
Yeah, there was a, yeah, there's a person on Facebook, like a mom who does, you know, has a Facebook page where she just talks about raising her children across it. And I think somebody printed out a picture of her to me, and it was like, oh my God, I thought it was you. It was like, oh my God, I thought it was me too. How about you?
Once, I don't remember where it was specific like that, but our son Woody had this girlfriend, which he cast off, but we wanted to keep her and we. We'll, we'll adopt Lauren and Woody, you can go live somewhere else. But she, I mean, she actually looked exactly like I did when I was in my twenties. It was like, and I wasn't the one to first identify this. And someone else, and this, you know, he's in college, right? And it's like, yeah. Yeah. She was a lot of fun. She was one of these females that would turn heads. I mean, we, I would say it, the Jabba Moose, and she'd walk past, and you'd see all these heads go like this. But she was just a regular person, so. And she liked gin and tonics.
You always know people find things when you put them in their chair.
Pretty much.
Or they sit on them.
Or they sit on them. And then you know something about that person's level of attention.
Or focus.
There you go.
So incredibly focused on something else.
Yep. If you want people to do something with paper, I thought, didn't know how you wanted to proceed, but I'd make those available.
Yeah, James will have to send it off right away after the meeting.
Right.
Because I meet with them Wednesday night.
Yeah. So I thought that way, if you want to pass one to everybody.
I'm just going to lay all my trust in you.
And mathematically figure it out.
Sure.
However you want to do it.
You know, every once in a while, I learn something.
I know.
And then Brady says, oh, yeah.
It's been a while though.
I had to do that for a year at the, at the, at the school. Holy cow, I learned a lot of things. I was, I was a school board person. One school board person is assigned to be the treasurer to review these. And like, what is this one? What is this one?
Yep.
Well, it's gotten worse because of all the technology behind so many things. You can't make hide nor hair from the descriptions of what it is.
And so it would be the checks that were written. It's like, what is this one?
Yeah.
So.
The purpose of putting them in newspapers and, you know, saying who it's paid to and stuff is, I mean, you have to do, you have to do a lot of research to find out what it might be, you know, from the name of the.
Or from the acronyms.
Yeah, from the acronyms.
The best group with acronyms is Soil and Water. They have one full page of acronyms at the beginning of their agenda.
Seriously.
Every month, it's there. But.
There's no time.
There's so much of it. It, it makes education look simple when you look at Soil and Water. It's amazing.
Well, Molly had given me like 12 pages of acronyms for the legal world.
Yeah.
But you do all know I have my own acronym now, CDW. Just so you know, I did announce this.
Chronic disease wasting?
Yes. Yes. That's right. That's what it is.
I don't believe you.
Before we get started again, Molly was saying that she was having trouble hearing you, Brady, so maybe when you, when you present, if you can just talk into the mic more directly.
Yes.
All right.
I was speaking down.
Cheeky.
There we go.
I'm reverting. I got, I kind of got over that for a number of years when I was acting a lot. But my, but my default is to go down here.
Okay.
So I have to work.
You need to project.
I have to.
Project to the room.
I have to remember. Think about it.
The first play I saw was, you were in it, and it was like a whodunit. And I think McHugh, there was a gunshot, and he was deaf, and I don't remember what your role was, but yeah, I remember.
Yeah.
It was pretty ridiculous.
So Molly, Molly says, yes, use your stage voice.
Yes.
All right. With that, let's get back to our meeting. Welcome back, everyone. We're returning from our short break, and we are on item number eight. We have Auditor Powers with us to talk about several different items. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item is for Superior Cycling Association. They've received a grant, and they're asking us to be fiscal agent for that grant. It's a $200,000 grant from the Environmental and Natural Resources Trust Fund. It's, it's to Superior Cycling Association for Phase Two Rehabilitation of Pincushion Mountain Bike Trails, and they'd like us to be the fiscal agent, which, well, it's required, actually. But just some background on this. So back in last November, they came to us, and the board approved some $27,000 to help with a grant that they'd already secured for Phase One, a 75,000 federal recreation trail program, and they had some money from ITRIB. And that hasn't begun yet. That grant doesn't end until 2025, so they, they plan to do that next summer. So this is really Phase Two of that, and this is from the Citizens Commission. What they intend to do is it's erosion issues, so it's maintaining. These trails were built many years ago. This is their first real work on them. It's been a lot of erosion. They need some proper drainage. They have exposed rock. They have, and they want to expand the width of some of the trails and create some, some adjoining beginner trails too, because of the type of people that are, are using the trails. So some beginner-friendly. And, yeah, I guess that's the essential of it. They're not really adding any new mileage other than these beginning trails that are going to be kind of adjoining the ones that are already there. So there's no match to this grant. And, and then the next step, they'll be coming back again. They've got another, I think about 475,000 of additional grants, but that's for the Britton Peak to rehab some of those trails and maintain those, but it'll come at a later date. So just expect to see them again. So right now, just asking to approve, to act as fiscal agent.
Well, I appreciate the information on the request and also the heads up on the trails by Britton Peak. That's nice to know that that will be coming. Any questions or comments for Auditor Powers? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the request.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. All right, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Second item is our third quarter general fund budget review. In general, we're in good shape. This is 75% of the year, and overall, our expenses are at 71%. So a little bit under. That's not unusual, given the tendency here to, for conservative budgeting, not unusual. And our revenues are way ahead at 105%. That's, to be ahead is, is not, also not unusual. This is a little more than usual. We have the federal payment in lieu of taxes. That always pushes us ahead of the mark. But this year too, we have interest revenue that's come in to our general administrative department. It's over twice of the, what we budgeted, and that's because of the Federal Reserve. We've talked about this before. So it's just continued since the last time we gave a budget review, about 900,000 of interest revenue this year. Our rates are staying up at 5.5% or so, even for money market funds that we're in. I'll hit some of the other high points here, but stop, ask a question anytime. So Department 40, that's the auditors, our revenue is a little bit short. That's just our federal aid in support of human service programs. Some of it comes to the general fund, and we've just received quarter one and two so far, so half the year, essentially. Elections, you see a large revenue amount. That's just from the 2022 elections. We received money from all of our partners, the city, the towns, the school, hospital in 2023. The administrator, that's the, revenue is a little bit short. That's because our public information coordinator that we share with the hospital, and they reimburse us for. We've just gotten quarter one and quarter two when this report hit. The third quarter is being paid. As we speak, the victim-witness program had extraordinarily high travel. They usually budget, you know, a few hundred. This was the Duluth trial primarily, which we're all aware of, but the whole staff had to go down there for a week, essentially. I'll just drop down to jail. We've seen this over a couple of quarters now. They just had some late billings for medical costs from 2022 that are being paid now, and that's why that looks so high. The housing has not gone out of control, which is what it's sort of looked like. Environmental health, you see some large expenses for, it's attorney fees, compliance work, and septic inspections that have exceeded that budget by a lot. But Tim says they knew going into this Lake County was not using all of their funding. So this is going to be funded by their unused funding from one watershed, one plan.
Correct.
Funds, so.
I had a question about that. So.
Yeah, I don't know details.
So when we have this expense here, when does that revenue show up?
I don't know exactly when, maybe.
I've, I've seen the paperwork on it for all the attorney costs and for, I believe, all the septic inspections through August. So that paperwork has been done. I've seen that.
Because that was promoted to us as.
Right.
I mean.
It will totally.
We'll do this, but we aren't going to have to pay for it. So when I look at that.
Right.
Amount.
Yeah, no, it's, I've seen the paperwork. It's coming.
It'd be nice to get it in the year, but if it isn't, it'll be, it'll be adjusted for the audit.
Yeah, we need to send Lake County a big thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. But I just, when we're talking budgeting, and I love quarter three because it's more accurate when you're thinking about next year than I want to know.
It gets you much closer.
Yes.
And then Score Recycling, they're, again, 50% of their grant is paid, but the second 50 is coming in later. PIF down there just means paid in full. It just means some of these allocations that we budget for the library, historical society, the arts, et cetera. Those are basically levy grants to these associations. Well, we have an agreement for the library, so it's not a grant, but we pay them all at one time. Community Center, so their fees, their general fees that they collect are about double what was budgeted. The, the curl, you don't see a doubling of the total revenue because Curling Club is about 50%. That's a big lease fee. And I think I'll leave it at that unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Auditor Powers? Commissioner Hawkins?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. Thank you for the quarter three. It's my favorite time of year. And I am a total advocate of conservative budgeting. But I have said more than once that I think we, under-budget revenues, we over-budget expenses consistently. So if you take your quarter three, 2023, and you compare it to 2022 and 2021, you will see we consistently do that. So, in fact, this year, yeah, we're, our expenses, we consistently under or over-budget our expected expenditures, and you'll notice that we consistently under-budget our revenues, which goes back to if you go down to the line items of those things and compare those, comparing which departments consistently do not budget in a more, less conservative way. I would say there's room in our budget to bring down the 9% levy. I will leave that to the experts here to find those, because when you have. because when you have some departments regularly under-budget your revenues you're expected for next year, I would like to know why we consistently do that year after year after year.
Administrator York.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Hawkins, you are correct. I mean, it is, it is our approach to be conservative in how we budget so that we don't end up with deficits. I was talking with Brady yesterday, and there is potentially an opportunity for us to knock down the preliminary 9% levy. And we don't have the details on how that's going to look, but we do have, in personnel, in a couple of areas, we have underspent. And that creates an opportunity for us to to look at reducing that preliminary levy. So Brady and I are going to dig into those numbers more. Don't don't expect it to be cut in half or anything like that. But I I agree with you. I mean, we should be looking for those opportunities. And fortunately, it appears that there's going to be one to to knock down the levy this year, so.
Thank you.
Other questions for Auditor Powers?
Both.
Okay. Thank you so much. And on to public notice for the allocation of Title 2023 Title III funds.
So this is, the Title III funding, Secure Rural Schools, comes in at various dates. It was a little bit later this year. So we did get funding. It's called 2022, but that's federal years. And the amount is 29,935.90. In order to spend that, we have to declare what use we're going to make of those funds and then put it out, put this out for a 45-day notice before we can spend it. And the proposal here is just to use it for the contract with our coordinator for Firewise and to carry out the Firewise program under the community wildfire protection plans, including the brush removal assessments and the like, particularly at this time because we've not gotten a state grant as we usually do to to cover the the main bulk of those costs. They've changed some of their, let's say, their focus from the state and what they're looking for in these grants. So Lake County did not receive one either. So we're both looking for how to revise our grant requests in the future. It may be that we have to do it on a more localized way and 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 ask for funds for this area, for that area, et cetera, rather than a county, we're such a small county that we do it on a countywide basis rather than by some, you know, an ecosystem, a lake area, so forth. That may be, but but our coordinator is researching that right now to see why we did not get the grant this year, so.
Yeah, two things changed. The grants in the past have been one year. Now they're for 18 months. And then the other thing is that both Lake and Cook County didn't get the grants. As you mentioned, a different approach. But Erin Moll and Kling, who is the coordinator for Firewise, is actively pursuing why we didn't get those grant funds that were requested so that we can make add-up changes and changes for next year. But clearly with the additional concern about spruce budworm, dying forests, people removing trees, very actively creating safe zones around their house, whether it's through Firewise or other means, those brush piles are critical for our community. And so continuing to be able to push them up, burn them, do all the things that are needed to keep us safe from wildfires is really important.
And in the light of that, that was one comment that he did hear back immediately when he got the notice, was that they're more competitive this year. And it may be things like spruce budworm that other communities that haven't put in, you know, let's say, larger grant requests now are. That that could be the largest reason.
And those would be the counties that did get funding that are farther to the west of us as spruce budworm moves east, so. Absolutely. Questions for Auditor Powers? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Brady. On to Item Nine, Administrator York.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Item Nine A is a request to approve an issuance of requests for proposals for construction management services. This is in support of all the projects that have been identified in the capital improvement exclusive of the work on the Justice Judicial Center. Last meeting, you all approved, or was it two meetings ago? You all approved the issuance of a RFP for architectural services, and I'll talk about that more in a little bit. This is just regarding the deferred maintenance projects in the capital improvement plan. So across all the buildings that the county owns, we have a detailed list of projects that need to be undertaken to get our buildings back in in better shape. And just as a reminder to folks who are listening, we undertook a process, starting in early 2022, to hire a consultant, which ended up being a company called CRBPS, to do assessments of all our buildings. They went through each building and meticulously recorded. They took pictures, noted the condition of all the mechanical equipment, HVAC, electrical plumbing, and and then also noted the condition of each component of the building. And it was really a rigorous exercise. And we now have really comprehensive data for all of our buildings. And based on the condition of of all of those building components, CRBPS developed a list of projects that the county is recommended to undertake between now and 2028 to get our buildings back up to snuff. And so those are the projects that are included in the CIP that the board approved on August 22nd. And so basically, this RFP is to to hire a construction management firm that can assist us in implementing all those deferred maintenance projects. The scope of the combined projects is such that it's not something that we can do just using staff. So we need to have a firm onboard to help plan and oversee those projects. And so just going to briefly go through the what we're anticipating doing. If the board approves this RFP, it would be issued today. We'll be reaching out to specific firms who have done work for other counties that have been recommended to us. We'll also be posting it on the county website so that other firms that maybe we haven't thought of will be able to apply. Then we'll have a pre-proposal meeting with interested firms on Monday, November 20th. We will ask all the responding firms to submit questions by November 27th, and then we'll provide answers to to all the questions to all firms on Friday, December 1st. We have set a deadline of Thursday, December 21st, for proposals to be submitted. And then there will be a process to have the budget and facilities advisory committee members help us review and score those proposals. We would anticipate doing respondent interviews probably toward the end of the week of January 8th. And then we would request the board to approve the selection of a firm at its second meeting in January, on January 23rd of next year. So that is, that is basically the request. There's obviously a lot more detail in the RFP, but I'm sure there are questions, and I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Questions for Administrator York?
Go first.
Commissioner Wood. Okay. So we've all seen what the Highway Department has put up for the RFP with pages of drawings on what needs to be considered when the people are putting in bids for this particular project that they're asking. What are we giving to potential project managers so they know how to make a bid, estimate? To give us a price?
Well, we're giving them the project list.
And the project list, are we going to give just the printout with all of the code numbers on it? And so they'll have to look it up to see what's going to happen specifically?
That is, that's what the pre-proposal meeting is for, is for folks to ask questions about that and for us to get answers. And I think we'll probably need to involve CRBPS in that process.
Well, the one big question that I have is, is like for the Hovland Town Hall. When when there was a statement that for the floors, what are we going to do with the floors? What needs to be done besides probably a cleaning and a waxing? But what is that, what is being being proposed by by the consultants to be done with the town hall? I I just don't know specifics. And when they talk about interior doors and they talk about this, to what standard is this town hall being brought up to? Whose sense of, of this is what it should be like to have a town hall? I mean, are we talking about now having a septic system and a well and interior plumbing? So then we'll be like everybody else? Everybody else? Not everybody else, but we'll be like other town halls in the county? I don't think that there's been a request for that. And so to, the numbers that have been proposed, I believe, might not accurately reflect what, particularly the town halls. Now, I'm not going to question for the community center or for any of these other buildings that are normal or they're 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 not a community, they're not the East End community-based town halls that are embraced by the community members and that have a long history of being gathering places for those community members. So when, so when the, this request goes out, and will there be a scope of work defined for every building? When, no, but will that be part of the bid? When the bid comes in, they're going to, they, they, the construction manager at risk will define what the scope of work is. Question? For, he will define on paper what he will, he, I'm saying he collectively. He or she? What what they will do for X amount of money? Not just reading off of what the consultants had said for us, but they should put it in writing. This is the scope of work. This is what we will do, building by building. Not what the cost will be, but this is specifically what we will do. Yes, it might be a reiteration of what is in the, in the, from the consultants. But when, when the RFP comes in, there should be defined as to what is going to go on the floors, on the walls, what details of what's going to happen in, and I'm only using the Hovland Town Hall. But but that should be, that level of detail should be in the scope of work. So if someone else is bidding, then you know what they are intending to do for materials for for each of the different buildings.
I think that's a fair observation. What I understood, the board, I was hearing prior to bringing forward this RFP that the board wanted to get started yesterday on getting an RFP out on the street. I I'm not sure if I fully understand your question. It sounds like, are we asking, are we asking the respondents to provide an interpretation of the project list?
How would I know what they're going to do? Their interpretation might not be what the consultants had said, although I don't, I mean, interpretation, it's a code number. It should be pretty well-defined. But this is what you're going to do. But what are you going to do? It should not be an interpretative process. Or if it is, tell us what you're going to do. What is the floor covering going to be? What specifically are you going, what kind of doors are you doing? I mean, every door has a name. What type of door is, is it a five-panel? Is it a three-panel? Is it, is it steel? Is it laminate? What what is it? And those need to be defined in the scope of work. So we, as the customer, understand specifically and then can assess the quality of the workmanship that we get from from the person managing this project. Otherwise, here's the number. This is what we're going to do. Ah, no, no. This, to do this RFP is going to take quite a while for somebody to go through all the 25 buildings and to and to get an estimate even from the subcontractors. There's going to be, need to be electrical work. Now, plumbing, roofers, you're going to need all these different subcontractors. And whomever is bidding is going to have to go out to the subcontractors and get that information from them to put together their whole bid. This is a very complicated thing that we're asking somebody to do. It's a big project with many components. It's not all in the same year. But if someone's going to bid on it, they have to have all the numbers for all the projects going out five years. I mean, I mean, that's the timeframe for completion. But but we don't sign a contract if we don't know specifically what they're going to give us, specifics for each building.
So my understanding is these companies have been utilized by other counties. They've been recommended to us because they do and have done quality work in other counties. So that's kind of my first filter.
Sort of like our management?
So so just to, just to clarify what the process would be, the county would never sign a contract with with a firm to do work without having those details. Right? And so this this allows us to get proposals from contractors and then based on the responses that we get to evaluate which one is going to be best suited to carry out the scope of work. And then we would talk about specifics in in writing a contract.
But when do they tell us specifically what they're going to do? How do we decide who's going to be the best?
Because we're negotiating the contract.
I think we tell them specifically what they're going to do.
But they need to have it in writing. They put it in writing.
We all.
We all need it.
Yeah.
They put it in writing. And then they're going to have to get bids for every one of the material components, for every labor component that they're going to need for the subcontractors. And that needs to be in writing. And that's not, the county has has put out a lot of money. We've had the accountant, the consultants that have identified the specifics, but they have not identified what, when it says three interior doors, what what are the interior doors for the Hovland Town Hall? What doors are they? And they're all different grades. And so whomever is giving us a bid needs to tell us. Otherwise, down the road, they'll say, we're going to have to cut someplace. We're going to have to cut someplace. So they don't really need this nice a door here. No, I mean, they, this is a bid. We're talking about a bid. However, in the early description of this will be a price set in stone, no. There will be opportunities for change orders. It's it's written. It's in here, change orders. Things change on every project all the time. Things come up, prices vary. Availability of product increases prices, or maybe a product is no longer available. So there will always be the change orders which will impact the end price. To think that that's going to say it's going to be X amount of money and that's it? No, it's not going to be that way. But we do need to have, start from the beginning, and we don't need to be in a hurry because we're now in Janu, now where are we? November.
Wait a minute. No, no, no. I was hearing from you explicitly, we do need to be in a hurry because we have projects that were scheduled in 2023.
Right.
So so a few weeks ago, we were in a hurry, but now we're not.
Well, because because this is inadequate. If they are going to do the work for us, they have got to lay out.
Well, you can't have it both ways.
Well, then we do it the right way, in a hurry. Yeah, in a hurry. We, we've spent the entire summer watching the roof leak or not.
The roof is not leaking, Commissioner. You keep saying that and it's not true.
Then why were you talking about scupper, what was it called? Scuppers on the roof. It's coming from.
There's a problem with the drain pipe. The roof is fine.
But anyway, we had water issues inside the courthouse for all, for quite a while. Regardless of that, we, nothing has been done on any buildings. We, Brady, do we not have some money someplace that something could have been done for some of our buildings? Pots of money?
Decisions could have been made decades ago on lots of things.
I'm talking about this summer, but, but like this, we, we have money sitting that could be used for deferred maintenance right now. Yes?
There's, there's, yeah, we have a fund balance.
Yes. So we could have done something. We should have got, somebody could have started something, I would think. But, um, what is Brian's job description? He's our, he's our.
So.
Point of order, Madam Chair. This is getting off topic.
Well, let's, let's get off of this.
I agree. We need to go back. And I see Commissioner Hawkins had her hand up.
Yeah, I want to understand, make sure I understand the purpose of this RFP. It's, when I look through the proposal, Part II proposal requirements and the bulleted list there. So they are not going to have a list of actual, this is what we're going to do to this building. I'm understanding this as, we're asking if, for these things that we need done, pre-construction phase services, what do you charge for that? But we don't even, they don't even know what they're going to do. But I'm assuming it's more like an hourly rate or a fixed, this is what we've done for other projects. And there's a whole list of them. So they aren't going to go out and send bids up, go look for subcontractors and get a bid on flooring because that's, they're not there yet. Which I don't understand this process. I don't understand, I haven't worked with this kind of thing before. So I'm asking you, you say you have, other counties have. What does this cost? Give me a ballpark range to hire a construction manager. What do you think these requests for proposals are going to come in at?
I don't know. I really don't know.
But other counties have used this for projects.
Correct.
Percentage of costs or?
So I can tell you the factor that CRBPS used for, um, pre, for like administrative costs was upwards of eight percent.
Eight percent? Okay. And this is above and beyond our 16 million in deferred maintenance?
I believe it's included in, in the 14.3 or 13.4.
Which, whichever one.
Whichever number we're talking about. Okay, that's, so it's included, they included that as part of that number? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that part. Number two in the proposed proposal requirement says, assist in legislative efforts in obtaining any related approvals. What does that mean?
That means to the extent that we're using state bonding, for example, that they might have a role in providing information to support those requests.
I'm, when I saw that as number two priority, I just, well, wait a minute. We need to get a deferred maintenance done. So I question that being placed at the top. I get if we hired them.
Commissioner, what section, I'm sorry, what section are you in?
It's under the proposal document.
One point.
Under tasks?
Part two.
Page 239 of our packet.
Okay, I've got the PDF open separately, so.
Yeah, it's Part II proposal requirements.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha. Yep.
Anyway, I am, I get that, um, they may, once they're, if we hire a firm, they might have information that could assist in that later down the road. But I see, I see this construction manager primarily to help us get our deferred maintenance done in a timely manner and not spending time in St. Paul to try to get funding for us. So I question that line there.
And I'm sorry, now that I'm reading it, related approvals, that, that probably would not be. This is not about financing. It's about getting like permits and that sort of thing, which isn't going, isn't germane to our project. So.
First. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, for like schools, there's a lot of state requirements. Um, for probably jails and judicial buildings, there's a lot of state requirements. And so you have to go through that bureaucracy to do any of these. But that's not, I mean, there's still deferred maintenance over at the jail. And so depending on where things go, if we do a buildup or not, um, it's still probably going to require some kind of state approval. And that would go on to manage.
That makes sense. But I just question the, the term legislative efforts. To me, that's contacting our legislative representatives instead of the, I get, I, I appreciate the explanation of permits at the state level. Totally understand that. But that's not how I read this. No, I don't do this very often, but, um.
Well, good question.
And, and I happen to know too, that depending on what needs to happen when, sometimes the legislature does have to get involved to get those permits through. So I understand we don't want to distract from our intent, but I also don't want to limit the scope if we do need that kind of leverage. Yeah, I think it's a valid concern to not get distracted from what we're really trying to do though.
So to get back to Commissioner White's question about the details of what we're asking them to do and having specs for doors and, and every other little piece of this. Um, I'm wondering what suggestion you might have about how to go about achieving that? Because I brought this forward today because I was hearing from, from you that you, you know, we have 20, we have projects scheduled in 2023. We haven't made any progress on implementing the plan. And so I wanted to get the ball rolling on this. Now I'm hearing from you that we're going too fast and that we need more detail. And I'm fine with that. If that's what you're, if that's what you're seeking, we can get more detail, but it's going to take more time and we're not going to be issuing an RFP. I mean, and I, and I'm going to need some, some direction from you on how you want to go about getting the information that you need to feel comfortable making a decision on this.
Okay. I was wrong and thought about this more, read this. And this, in here on, after number one, after, as you move on in Part II, under proposal requirements, the proposal shall identify at what point a guaranteed maximum price will be provided in the mechanism by which the guaranteed maximum price will be determined. And it will include all purchased materials. So we should know what those purchased materials are. How do we go about getting that list? We go through what we, what needs to?
The firms are going to have to go through the list. They're going to have to go through the list and say, here's what we understand this to be. Here's what we're proposing to, you know, for this door, we're putting in X.
Absolutely. And that's what it takes to do. If you're going to do a bid on a huge project, be it one, one million dollar house or, or a couple of, you have to go through every, everything, what it's going to cost. You're going to know that your two by fours are this time. And lumber yards do not guarantee that the prices will stay. I mean, it used to be three months and I don't know if they have any guarantee, what the guarantee is this? So there's, that's the change order safety net because that's out of everybody's control. But yes, if somebody's going to give us a bid, I know that the consultant said that it would be, I think it's 13.7 was their estimate for this, for the deferred maintenance. Well, this will be an opportunity for the person that's going to give us a guarantee. Although, and really, they're going to be giving, giving us their best shot, you know? And that's the competitive part. And there will be change orders, but we have to have conversation. We have to see what they're, what they are basing their bid on. We have to see that. And the only way to see that is they spell it out. I know from contracts, and this is, it is not, if this is, it's not municipal construction. It's residential construction. But it's big projects. And when you give somebody a number, they're going to want to know what the scope of work is, what you are going to do, what, and sometimes they don't know, so you put in a placeholder. But they're going to want to know what kind of type of plumbing faucets are you going to have? Those are the details that can really bring up the cost of a building. But that has to be written before they select who's going to do the work, who's going to build their house. It's the same thing. We have to know what this, what does this number mean? You, we have to know the specifics and it will be a lot of work for somebody. And if somebody goes through all this work, they're going to want the job. I mean, that, they're committed. They're, and is there any in here for bonding? I mean, that's a question, another one. Are we, are we going to require bonding from the person we're hiring who's guaranteed?
There would be a performance bond.
Performance bond? Okay. So that's, yeah, it will be a lot of work in that particular. The people bidding will have to go to the consultant's, um, final reports and go through the list and they will have to pull it out.
Commissioner Hawkins. I'm wondering about the timeline here. Is that standard? I mean, a month to get, gather all this information and get a proposal back to us? That's my first question.
It's, it's a really accelerated timeline. And, you know, if we get feedback from the respondents that, hey, we need more time to put this together, we can make adjustments. But again, I was feeling pressure based on the direction I got here, that we needed to get this going.
Okay, one more time. I was wrong. Back it up. Undo this, let's start over.
I'm just saying, that, that's what I was responding to.
Okay, right. And I, I do appreciate that because I did also put that kind of pressure on you. So, but I appreciate that we're thinking ahead. Now I'm questioning the timeline. Is it reasonable? My second concern is we are kind of late in the year. If we are going to, somebody's going to bid on this and think, oh, I'm going to start in 2024. I'm guessing a lot of the construction projects have already, they already have their list. They work ahead of time. So I'm just wondering, I don't know, um, what, how successful this will be.
Right. I don't either. Um, we are where we are. We can't go back. We can only go forward. Um, so we'll issue the RFP. You know, it's been the case with projects that the, that the highway department has put out for bid, that because of timing or other circumstances, we, we get one response or we get no responses or we get a, a bid that's just way over what we budgeted. And then we have to adjust. And this is really no different.
So that, I just want to make sure we're all aware, that's probably likely, which then I'm, okay, what's Plan B? Because that's what I do. What's Plan B? And, um, what do we need to do in our own maintenance department? Do we need to temporarily hire help to get some of those projects done? That maybe need are more immediate? I don't, I don't know. I'm asking the question.
And I think we'll have a good opportunity at our committee of the whole to find out from Brian, you know, what is being done with maintenance. So next Tuesday will be a good opportunity to visit with him. Commissioner Starley, you had your hand up.
Thank you. And I appreciate James for putting all this together. This is the furthest along we've ever had, any kind of a project in Cook County. When construction companies respond to us, if they do, if they respond in three or four different ways, we're in control. We look at what they say, we look at what they offer, and we say yay, nay, whatever. So let's not worry right now about minute details. Let's just say we need to move forward, as you're hearing, and see what happens in January. Because we can't get into the rabbit hole with minute details right now. But compliments to you, James, for doing this. And I think that, um, construction companies probably are out there looking for work. And I think we're probably one of the most challenging ones that may just, uh, look at us and say, yeah, we'd like to work with you. So fingers crossed that that happens.
And this is a five-year timeline. It's not all in one season. And it's not one big project where you have to dig a hole and, and pour concrete. This is five years with a multitude of, of projects that could be worked in, in their bit, their schedule someplace else or however it works, so.
And I'd like to go to the, the piece involving the Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee. Commissioner Hawkins and I both have experience with, um, what work was done just to get CRBPS on board. And that group is very thorough. I feel really confident about their ability to look at what comes in. They really scrutinize. They had very thorough discussions. And, and so I feel comfortable about that part of this. Other questions or comments? Commissioner?
So, so the consultants will be part of selecting a manager for this?
I'm sorry?
Will the, will the, the consultants be part of deciding, I mean, reviewing the RFPs?
Are you talking about CRBPS?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Oh.
They'll, I mean, they'll be, we'll be reaching out to them to get, you know, clarification on, on those line items, but they're not going to, no, they're not helping us to select them.
That decision is made here.
Yeah, okay. Well, and then just the one question, we're, there's a lot of talk on, on here about the CI, no, I can't find it. The CIP.
Steering Committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Where is it? Who is it?
Well, we haven't formed it yet. But it, it will include, my, my expectation is we'll have several department directors. It's going to have to include, uh, folks from the state courts because they're going to be affected by projects in this building. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking about the architectural CIP. Primarily, it'll just be department directors. And I think we'll be leaning on the Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee a little bit for, for direction in that process as well.
And we're focused, this is for the deferred maintenance, for this one?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of the request for the proposal of a construction management services.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Starley. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for all your work on that.
Indeed. Let's see, let me, my computer went to sleep.
We're looking at our Arrowhead Counties Association Legislative Priorities.
Right. And this is a request we got from ACA to, um, for the board to discuss and rank the legislative priorities indicated in the form that's attached to the agenda item. I thought it would be best just to do this in person so that we didn't run afoul of any kind of open meeting laws.
Absolutely. Commissioner Starley, we're turning it over to you.
Well, as you know, we meet once a month. And, um, John Nogaro, who is our representative down at the legislature, asked that, we do this every year so that we can provide that information to the AMC conference when that is held in December. So these are the area, these are the areas that we came up with at our meeting from all 10 counties. And so we are asked individually to rank them. One is the highest and of course, six being the lowest priority. And it's an interesting selection of. And it's an interesting selection of subjects, because we're an interesting group of counties, you know, and.
I'm sure it looks quite different than other parts of the state.
Oh, yes. Yeah. And then the request was that this be sent off to our Secretary Barb, because we are meeting tomorrow night. So, appreciate that.
So we need to come to a decision on these. And then I assume you'll tally everything up and move forward. How would you like to proceed at this point?
That would be good. Proceed with that.
So do you want to distribute the forms to vote on, or how?
I'm sure. Commissioner Hawkins has them.
Oh, thank you.
I have questions, because some of these items on here, I didn't know anything about. So, can you provide some background? The casino collection of local option sales tax. I haven't heard any discussions in any of my committees about that. So where does that come from? What is that saying?
Well, that, that has been discussed in a couple of the different areas within St. Louis County, with the casinos that they have in their county. And it, it landed on here because some people felt that it was at least a priority. Maybe not the highest priority, but it should be discussed in the future for the, um, let's see, in the casino sales tax, the option for the sales tax.
That the tribes are collecting the sales tax?
That they would be able to collect a 1%. Like the county that they're in. Fond du Rhume is where this first came up a few years ago.
I guess I would have to.
I don't know.
Research a little more about that one before I would support that. And then the state support for property tax relief for disabled veterans. We already have a program for that. So what, what, what's the suggestion to change that, or?
I don't know if everybody has that. I don't know if it's a statewide.
It's a statewide thing.
Okay, well, I don't, I'm not sure on that particular background, how that ended up here. But evidently, some county wanted to have.
We have property tax relief, correct, for veterans or deferred?
There is a state, there is a state program.
Yeah, okay, I was.
Well, I mean, it, does it cover enough?
That's what I believe it's.
Has it kept up with everything, you know?
That's why I'm looking for background. I thought it covered 100% of your property taxes for.
It does not.
Uh-uh. I couldn't tell you exactly how, not many are taking part in it.
Before I rate, I needed to know some background.
I understand it's increasing their relief.
Well, and support EMS recruitment, we all understand that, and retention. NERC, you probably understand that.
Well, yes, and if we vote that up high, it's, we're going to be competing with NERC in bonding. Just hands up there. But yes, you know what, it'll save a lot on their utilities. They're hoping to go 100%.
He shared that with us here.
Yeah. I think that's an important thing.
Mental health, acuity beds for youth and adults, that is lacking in, in all the counties. When Grand Rapids developed their Justice Center, they did provide some extra beds for folks that were there when they opened. I think they're partially open right now. So that's, that, there's been a scarcity for that. And then the tax forfeited issues arising from the Supreme Court ruling, we all understand what tax forfeited is all about, so.
Commissioner White.
And I have no idea what Grand Portage feels about the casino collection of local option sales tax.
Yep, well, there was nobody at the meeting from, you know, nobody was representing Grand Portage, other than me representing Cook County. But it was an issue in other counties, mainly St. Louis.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Starley, for bringing these to us. Commissioner from Carlton County talked to me a little bit about that. And I also need to talk with, or hear from Grand Portage before I vote that up very high. Or rather, I would vote that last because of the lack of communication there. But it does sound like a pretty potentially advantageous thing, because it does not impact anyone except for the customers of the casino. And so, but it can benefit, you know, off of the visitors. So it's another opportunity for us to leverage visitor dollars to help our local community. So I like the idea, but I cannot, in good conscience, vote it above last without consulting the tribe or hearing from them, so. But, but I like the idea quite a lot. We'll just, I only can see it from one angle, and I need to see it from many angles in order for me to make an informed decision there, but.
So you understand, under the column, we're Cook County, and that's where you place your priorities.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
I'm going to show my ignorance here now. So the Arrowhead Counties Association is asking us to list the priorities off of this, and that's separate from AMC, which I already sent my, my list to AMC. And so, they have their own organization that will do lobbying for, like AMC does?
We have John Angaro.
Okay.
He's our representative.
So, this is to tell John.
Yes.
What he should focus, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Madam Chair, I hope, I appreciate these questions, because I think it really does help all of us. And I think it's worthwhile, if we have comments, to go through and just talk about them. And I, I like to talk about my thoughts and strategy, at least. We know that tax forfeiture is, is a huge issue for our region. I'm not so sure it will be a huge issue for Cook County. It is an issue, but I don't know how huge it is compared to our need for EMS and potentially the NERC bond. I mean, there's some really big, or mental health, I mean, there's some really big issues that I think have a, a larger impact for us locally. So I guess it's up to each of us whether or not we want to put that regional need up, up on the list, or if we want to, you know, keep it with, with Cook County. And I kind of play that game with our AMC votes, too. Like, sure, this is a big deal, and everyone's going to vote for it. But for our sake, you know, maybe we want to take a different tax, so it's just.
I appreciate that, because I had already marked number one on that. Because I get, we don't have a whole lot. But the implicat, implications at the state level are huge. And it will affect us, not to the same degree, it will affect St. Louis County. So I'm supporting our neighbor saying, yeah, that's legislature, you need to fix that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I agree. Why I'm not going to put it at the top is because I figure there's no choice. This has to get addressed. You know, it's, whether we vote it last or first, it has to get addressed. If it's not even a priority, it's, there's just no way of avoiding that. So for us to focus out there, I'm, but I, I applaud you for thinking of the region.
And I think very much like you, Commissioner.
Yeah, but it's, it's like, in my mind, it's like, that, that's going to happen regardless. So what, what might not happen as a priority? And is that where we want, so that's where the game comes into play, right?
You are more optimistic than I. And I'm like, you know what? If the legislature doesn't hear it over and over and over and over, they're going to let it slide. So that's why.
Yeah, understood.
Both are here.
Other questions or comments before we vote? All right.
Madam Chair. I think for the listening public who can't see this form and who do not have access.
It's in the board packet.
Oh, it was in the packet.
Yeah, it's listed on page.
No, I, I'm not, not, not refuting that at all, but it's that there are people that are only listening to us right now. They're listening to us. And what we're talking about is what Commissioners Starley had said was there is a Arrowhead Counties Association, and there are six, or six items that we are being asked to rate in, in, for importance. That, for Cook County. There are other counties that are also rating these items for, for their own counties. And this will be pushed forward to be lobbied for the 2024 Legislative Priorities ballot. Yes?
Correct.
So that's what we're talking about, everyone who's only listening. Or just looking, they're looking at us, and we're just sitting here. So that's what we're doing at this moment in time. And then these will be taken together and.
We'll give them to Commissioner Starley.
Yeah, and then she'll, someone else will collate them.
I think we'll give them to James.
We'll forward it.
Put my name on this, or do you? There's mine.
It's like school, just light it down.
Do I get a vote?
I don't know, do you get a vote?
I don't think so.
They know we have five commissioners, not six.
Nobody asked for mine. We can talk about that later.
It's interesting how these change from year to year, too. You know, depending on what's happening with our legislature, with our counties. And, you know, there's always fluctuation, and nothing which is good, set in stone.
All right, let me tabulate these real quick.
This is an example of ranked choice voting.
Does I know?
It's interesting being at the meeting, too, because some people get on their soapbox. This is the important thing for us to really consider. Okay, what's your points? Well, that sounded good, and well, on to the next one, and that was really good, too.
Hard to prioritize priorities.
It is. Well, you just have a good discussion, you understand where people are coming from.
Yeah.
You know, what's important in their county. And then wider, like NERC, or wider than tax forfeited land, or wider than whatever.
Just so we understand that, oh, he's not talking.
So the lowest number is going to be the winner. Okay, drum roll, please.
Thank you.
And so, coming in with the lowest average score of 2.6 is tax forfeiture is arising from Supreme Court ruling. The next lowest would be number four, which is support for EMS recruitment and retention. The next lowest would be mental health, high acuity beds for youth and adults. Then following that would be a $4 million bonding request for NERC Solar Farm. In fifth place is state support for property tax relief provided to disabled veterans. And then coming in last would be casino collection of local option sales tax. So I will, I've got a note on my calendar to get those results back to ACA, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll do that after the meeting.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your work with that.
Okay. Then, next thing we have is a nomination of a representative to the ARDC Board of Directors.
And I would just recommend that we look at this when we have some discussion about Commissioner assignments and such. That is an item that we have on our Committee of the Whole. It's not to vote, but it's to discuss and talk about these. So I think we can have some discussion at that point in time. How does everyone else feel about that?
Sure.
I don't think there's a deadline on this.
End of 29th?
December, so.
End of December.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and so, I'm sorry if this is out of place, as we're going to discuss it later, but I'm very pleased that you're chair for, for that, and would like to see you continue, but is that your intention is, I mean? Okay, good, okay, that's, just wanted to.
Gives us some direction for our discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, great. All right, Administrator updates?
All right, a few things on the list today. As I mentioned, this Board approved the architectural request for proposals at its last meeting, or two meetings ago, I don't remember which. We have had the pre-proposal conference. We do have three firms that are intending to respond. They have questions due to us today, and then we have to get responses back to them by, by Thursday. Those proposals will be due November 30th. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll ask our Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee members to help us review and score those proposals, and we'd move toward contracting in the first part of next year. And I don't really have more details to share, other than the pre-proposal conference, there were some questions there. And it was, it was a good conversation. So we specifically invited five firms to respond. Three are planning to respond. We also put the RFP on the county website, and that did not generate any responses. So the firms that we reached out to are ones that specifically have experience in the, in the realm of judicial buildings, jails and court facilities, so. So that's one thing. Wanted to mention, too, that we continue our strategic planning process. We had a couple of open house meetings on Wednesday and Thursday last week for staff to come and visit with us and provide feedback on the draft initiatives and goals that we've established. We had a total of about 22 people show up for those. So it was an overwhelming attendance, but the folks who did show up, we had really good conversations. Commissioners Hawkins and, and White were there as well, and I think can speak to the, the interest that folks who attended the meetings had. So that, that's good, that, and we also do have, for folks who could not attend those meetings, we do have an online survey. So everybody has received a draft of the strategic plan. We're asking everybody to look at it and provide feedback through the online forum. And we'll use that to, to tweak. In fact, I took some notes during the conversations we had last week, and we'll use some of that feedback to, to kind of edit the document. So, great discussion, and I really want to encourage any staff who are listening right now, if you were not able to attend the open house, or even if you were, make sure you fill out the survey, because your voices in this process are really important. The plan won't be successful if we don't have everybody informed about what it is and providing feedback on where our focus should be over the next three years. Excuse me. So, next item I have, just wanted to speak to the issue of mold in the courthouse. That's something that we talked about the last few meetings. We do have remediation work underway in Land Services. And we are, what we want to do is we're going to remove all the materials, drywall and carpet that may have mold spores in, all the permeable materials. And then we're going to do some cleaning and try to eradicate all the mold. Before we put things back together, we are going to have a third party come in, not Servpro, but another company, to do some more testing and make sure that the office is free of mold before we actually do the restoration of the office. I, I can share with you, yesterday, Brian told the Building Committee. I can share with you, yesterday Brian told the Building Committee that he's been having difficulty reaching that, that other testing firm. We have done work with this company before, and we do have some other contacts that we're going to try to reach out to within the company, different division, but same company, to try to get a response. So this is something that has kind of plagued all of our efforts to address these problems, is just getting people to return calls and getting people to, to do work in a timely way. But Brian's being diligent about following up with, with the vendors to, to try to get them to, to respond. So that's Land Services. Regarding the water intrusion that we had in MIS, we believe that that water was coming in around the pedestrian bridge. And so Brian and his staff have been out there caulking gaps around where the bridge meets the building. This is something that has been a consistent problem ever since the bridge was installed. I think as we look about doing upgrades to this building, there needs to be a conversation about whether we're better off with or without that bridge. It was originally constructed as an entry point for Public Health and Human Services. After we had the shooting in the Attorney's Office in 2011, security, there was a security debriefing, and it was recommended that we close that access to the public. And so now it's used primarily for staff. And it's also a point of egress if there's an emergency in the building, so it is useful for that. Excuse me, but the bottom line is that that bridge causes a lot of problems in terms of the maintenance and upkeep of the building. So I think we are going to have a, have to have a conversation about whether we're better off keeping it or getting rid of it and just sealing it up so that we don't have further problems with water intrusion. Commissioner White mentioned the, the roof issue. As I said, the, the roof is not actually leaking. It has to do with the, with the drain that runs from the roof to the, to the outflow at the bottom of the building. We have met with a couple of contractors. In fact, I went up on the roof with Brian and the contractor to...
Lucky.
Well, I wanted to see what's going on up there.
Yeah.
And so, we have a couple of proposed fixes, one of which involves retrofitting the existing drain and cutting an opening into the base of the building to allow it to, allow the water to exit before it reaches the point where Brian believes the, the plug is occurring. I told Brian yesterday, I'm not super comfortable with that idea because we are still, we would still be using those drain tiles as our drainage system. And there's no guarantee that we couldn't have a blockage at the point where the elbow comes out and the water exits the building. And so I want the most fail-safe solution that we can find. And the other, the other approach would be to install a downspout on the outside of the building. We have been in contact with the State Historic Preservation Office. We could use that solution without running afoul of their requirements. And from, from what I understand, that would be, I mean, you're never going to have a system that is fully foolproof, but if you have the drainage directed down the outside of the building, then you have a, less of a chance of things backing up, obviously, inside the wall. And that's really what we're trying to correct. So, we're exploring both of those options, and I expect to have more information here in the, in the next two to four weeks. And I'll let you know kind of how we're going to move forward on that. But that is something that has to be addressed before we do any remediation in the basement. There's really no point in trying to do restoration work down there until we, until we know that we've got the drainage issue corrected. So, that is going on. Wanted to mention, a week and a half ago, I went over to Grand Rapids for a meeting of the Minnesota Association of County Administrators, Region Eight Group, and had a chance to tour the new facility there, the new jail and courthouse. And I have to say, it is a monster. 132,000 square feet. Commissioner Starley mentioned the, the drive-through Sallyport that is big enough to hold a bus and like five parked cars. This is not what we're aspiring to. And, and if we were, I would probably quit my job right now. It's a huge project. They've got, their jail administrator is overseeing that. He's the lead staff person on the project. They're working with a group called Contegrity, which has a construction manager on it. We toured the entire new construction. They actually vacated like a downtown street so that they could extend the building over that street. Again, 132,000 square feet, much of which is the jail. They have three court, courtrooms, one of which is a COVID-compliant courtroom, so the jury box allows for jurors to sit six feet apart. That's the big courtroom. Then they have like a medium-sized courtroom, which is way bigger than our existing courtroom. And then they have a small courtroom, which I would guess is roughly the size of our current courtroom, which would be for smaller, you know, like non-villainy trials, I assume.
Traffic tickets.
Right. So, quite an impressive facility. They are targeting a December 31 completion date. And all I can say is good luck to them, because when we were going through the building, it looked like there was a heck of a lot of work to get done before then. They have a crew of about 70 people working on it full-time to try to meet that deadline. So it's an enormous project. But it was useful to talk to Rhett Skiles, who's the administrator in Itasca County, just to get his perspective on kind of the logistics of doing a project like that. I have yet to go to Carlton County, but I have talked with Dennis Generaux, who's the coordinator there. I want to tour that facility as well and just kind of glean whatever information might be useful to us as we move forward on our project. So, it was a really useful, useful meeting.
The Carlton project will be part of our spring touring when we get together with the...
Well, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they hopefully be done by then.
Right.
To the point that it won't be occupied, we can have a tour.
So Commissioner, when you were in Itasca, did you go through the whole...
Oh, whole thing.
Yeah.
Over two hours.
It's, it is huge.
It is.
It's really remarkable. And not, not something that we should aspire to. You know, when you're, when you're surrounded by other counties, the idea of a regional jail makes sense. When you're at the end of the road, not so much.
I think the construction people and that type of thing, we can certainly learn from, the Integrity Group.
Yes. I've heard, Contegrity, I've heard nothing but good things about. Other counties have used them, and they're apparently a really capable, competent, and effective firm at managing construction projects. So they'll definitely be on our invite list for the CM RFP.
Question.
Is, is Contegrity for construction integrity or convict integrity?
Now, I didn't ask that question, Commissioner, so I can't...
They can go both ways.
That's what I have.
All right, well, thank you so much, appreciate that update. Now for Commissioner updates, let's start with Commissioner Hawkins.
Well, let's see, you had an Extension Committee meeting yesterday afternoon. We had two members that reached up their retirement time. So, we have openings on the Extension Committee. We have, I think we have an application for one, and we're still seeking a second, which Commissioner Starley, it comes from, we're looking for representation from the West End, so. She's going to try to recruit somebody, but anybody's interested. That's all I have for that. City-county contract meeting, I just want to say. I appreciate sitting at the table and listening. I thought it was excellent discussion. We, it's, we need to do more of that, sitting down with our partners and just having, okay, what's working, how can we improve things? And so I look forward to that group continuing to meet and gathering information. Just want to say thank you. I was appreciated being able to sit at the table and give my opinion, so thank you.
Well, I was going to ask, actually, to avoid quorum, and it seems like you have a strong interest if you wanted to take, if you wanted to use, have that seat instead of...
Well, I'm, I'm willing to, but whatever. I mean, I think it worked out, we had multiple people in the room, and there was a small group talking. But I would have just listened and then asked my questions later. But no, I just, I just wanted to appreciate, show my appreciation to our administrators, our staff, and because the commissioners and the councilors sitting at the table, like, okay, we don't know. And so it was an opportunity for everybody to sit at, at the table and all hear the information at the exact same time, which is what I was a proponent of, of why I wanted that to be an open meeting.
Right. And if I could just add, Madam Chair, appreciate your being there, Commissioner Hawkins. After the initial confusion about how we were doing these meetings, at the end of our first meeting, that was publicly noticed. I understood that there were going to be two representatives from the city council, two from the county board, to participate in what we called negotiations, but it was really just kind of like talking through issues and figuring out what needs to go into the contract. At that first meeting, that was, to my understanding, a working meeting. The city had actually noticed it as a public meeting, and we had not, because, again, we understood it not to be a public meeting, but a working meeting. But the more recent meeting, we did publicly notice, and I, it's my expectation. Well, I mean, so, so, I mean, you know, if there are commissioners who want to sit in, I want to make, there's nothing secret going on here. I just, I misunderstood what the intention of that, that first working meeting was supposed to be.
And I just want to, that's why I'm expressing my appreciation that it was open. I think it should be open. I think these city-county contract meetings, initial discussions should be open so that all councilors, all commissioners, hear the same thing from our administrators and our staff of what, what they're working on, what are the issues? How do we as policymakers make sure we're writing policy that reflect what we want and are taking into account the various opinions or ideas out there of what's needed? So, I just want to say, I hope that continues. I think it, it's beneficial. There was nobody, nobody wants to sit through that meeting for the public. I really don't think they care. They trust us to write the policy. But in order for us to really have good policy, it takes communication amongst both parties and all elected officials, so. That's my opinion, and I'm telling you what I think should continue. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm done.
I, I was just going to further clarify, just for folks listening. This, the topic of the meeting was the street maintenance agreement that the county has with the city and specifically related to snow plowing. It's primarily about snow plowing, but it also involves grading and putting calcium chloride on, on city streets. There's a give and take that has existed historically, where, you know, there, there's work that the city does on county roads, there, there's work, there's a lot of work that the county does on city roads in terms of clearing snow in the winter. And the agreement that we've, that we've had to, to govern this work has not been updated since 1979.
Right.
So, so it's probably time to update it, just, just saying.
Yes, and that was the discussion we had about, oh, we need to do this more than once every 30 years. But things change, and I don't know that there's going to be a lot of changes in that final contract from what we did 30 years ago. But it's really good to make sure we at least discuss it and make sure all the parties doing the work understand what our expectations as elected officials passing that policy, signing that contract, are saying. And those of us that were elected officials at the table, we didn't even know what we, what we were asking.
So, we got a lot of good information, and we'll continue to get more, and that's part of this process. Commissioner?
So, my question is, is this something we should all be going to? Or should, can we trust that you'll come back with a better understanding and share what you've heard? Because, I mean, I'll be on the, one of the, you and I are doing the YMCA? The YMCA, and so should we be atten...
You don't have, it, it's personal, I think, wherever we decide.
In terms of where we end up, I mean, what we were talking about at the end of this meeting was establishing like a memorandum of agreement that just has like a scope of work, who does what for, and that would come to the board before it would be approved.
Right, and it would include time, materials.
Oh, I'm not worried about those, those pieces, but, but are you saying the value of mingling and sharing ideas with our counterparts in the city has great enough value that we should go?
For me, it did, I think so, especially that initial meeting. I think I expressed, our very first initial meeting, I expected some of that to happen, and it didn't. And I think it's really important that we make sure we're talking with our county reps, elected officials at, at, for an initial meeting, we're, you know, making sure we're understanding where they're coming from and where we're coming from. And I prefer to hear it firsthand instead of being told what's being said. So, I understand, working on the actual language, we all have to approve, we all have to read, we can ask questions that, but for me, it's more important to hear it.
Building the relationships?
Right, and I prefer to do it in person, so.
And the city is part of your district.
Yeah, yeah, really important to you. So, I have a double side of why I want to know what's happening.
Selfish.
That's why, I will just advocate that that initial meeting be an open meeting. Not everybody has to sit at the table, but you can be there to listen to what's being said.
And when is the next one, next initial meeting?
I don't think we've set, I don't think that's been set.
We haven't set it. Did we set it?
I thought we had.
No, that was, that was the memorandum of understanding, which I don't think needs to be, but that's... But the, I'm talking the next contract, which is the law enforcement, and those haven't decided.
Oh, we haven't set that one yet.
We'll get one done and set up the next one. Commissioner Mills, you had a comment.
Well, we can't all be to all meetings, and so I'm a big advocate for just two of us being at meetings. And so, Commissioner Hawkins, you are hoping to be at those meetings, and I would ask that you are on that instead of me, because I don't feel the need for more than two people to be there. So I just wanted to clarify that, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Thank you.
Other meetings, other updates?
Nope, that's all I have to report on.
All right, Commissioner White?
So, one more point of clarification. Then if we are going to have only two commissioners, we don't have to notice it. And, I mean, not that it's a lot of work to notice it, but it is work. And so if we know that only two commissioners are showing up, we won't jump through that hoop. So, I guess just clarification on whether anybody else wants to attend this meeting.
And this is specifically for highway road maintenance for city and county?
Correct.
No.
Got it.
Okay.
And I'll just clarify, that one I didn't have a problem with. It, I'm going back to the initial...
To the initial meeting.
Sharing of information, what's working, what's not.
You know what, in here?
In the evening?
Of, of each contract.
Of each contract, the very first one.
Because I'm guessing on some of the next ones that will be discussed, there will be more public input or public curiosity about. I don't know, I'm just...
All right, all right. Go ahead, Commissioner White.
And to that end, I did, and I get a request, or a, from the Colville Community Club, they would like to have, on December 16th, they would like to have a commissioners' meeting, have as many commissioners as would like to attend, but to talk about the town halls. And I did say that we are going to be doing that at our Committee of the Whole, but they would, they're reaching out and they would like to reach out and have conversations with the commissioners. And that's a Saturday morning at 10... And that's a Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. And so I did not know, I do not know the procedure for, I mean, I can't speak for everyone to say, oh yeah, we'll all come. So, I mean, that was their request, that there would be as many commissioners as could come, so it would have to be identified as a public meeting to come on December 16th, to have a conversation about not only the town halls, but I don't really know. So is, is this how it works?
Well, I guess, I can't recall in the last couple of years where we've had a request for all commissioners. But I will, I'm happy to attend on the 16th and pretty much share, you know, what we have from our committee of the whole. You know, you and I can do that together.
Yeah, well, I intended to go and, yeah, so, there's that. Okay, so there's that. So, so there's that. I, I, as per Chairman Deschamps, I am reporting that I attended a tribal council, had a meeting with tribal council, and I'm not at liberty to tell you what I talked about, what we talked about. I'm just following orders. So there's that. And then also now to the next group, the council on aging, they also need two new board members, or they have, might have slots for two people. One is, one is completed their term and another one is just gone. So, I don't know, and the other one doesn't know if they want to do it again or not. So, but that doesn't start until the next year. The, forget the acronym for all of this, but for the council, with the mental health, Public Health and Human Services Mental Health Group, a lot of discussion about the need for housing. Housing, housing and mental health, I mean, just, and not only housing, about the, the, this goes to the active living group also. The, if you are not really hale and hearty and very mobile, Cook County, Cook County, Grand Marais is a little difficult to get around. And so that is something that is on the radar, that needs to be worked on to make buildings and sidewalks and facilities more user-friendly, more accessible for people with growing disabilities. And like an increase in the number of benches for people who are making the effort to walk around, for them to sit down and have a breather now and again. So there is that. And I went up to the recycling center, which is not a, one of my things, but I went up to see how the bargain shop was doing and I did not come away with an armload of anything for myself. But it is humming along wonderfully with a lot of people using the place and donations galore. And that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Oh, so, Madam Chair, if I may, just related to the budget shop, I did see a story in, I think it was on WTIP recently, about how a lot of people are donating things that are not usable. And I don't know how much of an issue that is at the budget shop, but I have to expect that it probably is an issue to some degree. And I think that's something I'd like to follow up with, with Tim Nelson on, to see how much of a problem that is for us and how much time it's taking us to, and expense it is to discard things that, that we have no use for.
And I believe that is an issue that goodwill and different Salvation Army has dealt with for years, that people just.
Absolutely. And I know that was one of the reasons that they discontinued, years ago, you could drop off bags at night. And finally, they started posting a sign saying, you know, donations not in the evening. They installed a camera, because people were dropping off junk rather than taking it to the landfill and paying to, to dispose of it. So that has been an issue in the past and I think it's a great idea to follow up and just make sure it is not a continuing concern. But I know for first and second and for odds and ends, it has been an issue. Yeah.
And I think it's, I think, well, Dustin from North Shore Waste knows how much garbage is leaving the recycle center. And I think it's something like 30 yards and, well, I don't, I guess I don't know the timeframe, but it was a significant amount. I don't know that it's a, I don't know how significant of a cost burden it is in regards to our budget, but I still think it's not fair for us to be doing, disposing of other people's garbage for them. I had a question about the grand portage meeting. I attend the hospital board meetings and there is a closed session before those. And so I'm not privy to the confidential information and then I just attend afterwards. Is the whole meeting confidential or what's the deal there?
Tribal council?
It is. Yeah.
And so if we have a public elected official attending that can't say anything about it, I see that problematic. I don't know where that fits into our communication lines, but if you attend and can't talk to us about it, that doesn't do the board much good.
Then I should not be attending their meetings.
Because they.
To hear about them. No, this is, they are sovereign nation and it's not often that an elected official gets to attend one of their meetings. So then I would not go at all.
Yeah, during COVID, all of the meetings were open to everybody on Zoom. And so I've asked Commissioner, or former Commissioner, current Chairman Deschamps about that. And I know there's financial things going on that is confidential and part of the business and of course sovereign nation and they can decide whatever they want, but I do feel strongly we need a two-way street there if we're, if we're going to have lines of communication. So I'm not saying I don't think you should be there. What I'm hoping for is that we can build that trust to have those two-way communications. But I, I do have to say, I'm, I'm pretty uncomfortable with that arrangement. That's, it's not public at that point. As you say, it's not public.
I was a guest at their meeting.
So were you invited to attend?
Yes.
Okay. Then I think that's, you know, it's not as a commissioner assignment, it's that you were invited for that particular meeting.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I think that's fine.
Oh, okay.
Conversations.
It's not a regular thing then, you'll be attending.
No, 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 no. A regular thing will be that I will be going up to have conversations with Chairman Deschamps about whatever.
Yeah, absolutely.
But no, 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 this was.
That's what I thought. Good to clarify.
Great, thank you. And thank you for being there. That's wonderful. Again, to build that trust, I think is, is really important. Let's see here, I think, let's see here, between our last meeting and now, we've had our labor management committee, meeting and there wasn't a whole lot to report on there. Things are slowing down. We did start to talk about our timeline for negotiations for the labor contracts and, you know, it's been expressed through previous negotiations that they're hoping for an earlier timeline, so it can be more of a good faith negotiation throughout, throughout the process versus our county board setting the preliminary levy and then having our hands tied to not be able to have those good faith talks. So, and we kind of went back and forth on how soon is too soon versus what would be appropriate. So that was, that was beneficial.
Commissioner, if you mind if I interject?
Not at all.
I just want to clarify, I mean, it's, I'm a little concerned about the use of good faith, because we, we have negotiated in good faith. It's, it's more a question of the timing of setting the preliminary levy and how that impacts the county's ability or the flexibility that the county has to consider wage increase proposals. But I, I just don't want anybody listening to, to think that somehow we've been negotiating in bad faith.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just regurgitating a phrase that I heard at the meeting, word for word, which may be inappropriate. Ah, ba, ba, ba. Oh, and so now, right, we're through the pandemic and we're traveling more, so I'm been going to Virginia, going to Duluth, and it's, it takes a good chunk of time. I'll be going to Duluth this coming Monday again. But I feel like our regional organizations are kind of getting back into the swing of things and I think Commissioner Sullivan talked about the quarterly Forest Service meeting and how some of those challenges have happened. But for most of the regional meetings that I've been a part of, there wasn't so, so much turnover that, that the culture was lost. It's, it's more of a continuation and now that we're more in person, it's just a good feeling to, to see all that. I do often wonder though, if I drive so far and there's not a quorum, if that was a good use of time and, or, or even if there is a quorum, if that was a necessary use of time. And so just trying to weigh all that. But we do have to comply with state law for, for open meeting law, so I can, I can play in the sandbox. I spoke with the city council about any interest they might have in a municipal cannabis dispensary. And it was kind of the introduction for them. I believe Mayor Benson has brought it up a number of times, just to give a report on what's going on and stuff, but they hadn't really discussed that much. And knee jerk reactions, I think, were very cautious. There is one counselor who's all in, there is one counselor who's all out, one counselor who doesn't think it should be legal, and, and then two counselors, or two members that were open to the municipal dispensary idea, but also wary of capping the market, which, one thing I learned, and I feel foolish for not knowing this before, as I was on the city council, is that if there is a municipal liquor store, there cannot be another liquor store in the municipality. So, and I think that was news for a number of us, but that was really interesting. That is not necessarily the case for a municipal dispensary. However, Administrator Ross, the administrator, strongly suggested if the council and/or county were to open a municipal dispensary, that they would try to keep it as exclusive as possible, because that's the best business interest. And the whole point of that business would be to bring money to the community and kind of capture the visitor dollars again. So, and also the education piece and just the safety piece too. So Mayor Benson reached out afterwards and asked that we start an exploratory committee. And I think that's a pretty good idea. I don't know who should be on that or how, what it would consist of, certainly representatives in both the county and the city, but I was also trying to think of other expertise that might lend a hand in that, whether it's a business owner, a public health leader. And so just wanted to bring that back to the county board and see, see if there's interest there in that exploratory committee or if you had any suggestions who might be appropriate on that as far as expertise or something.
Number one, were you going there as a county commissioner?
Absolutely.
And are we in favor of?
I did not commit to anything. I, I said, this is an introduction to start talking about this, because I've brought it up at numerous meetings here. So, yeah, it's essentially the same as me talking about it here. Mayor Benson asked that I, that I go and talk about it. I've talked about it at the EDA as well. So, so far lots of talk and nobody's, nobody's committed.
And law enforcement, law enforcement has something to say about this, I know that, so.
About what exactly? A municipal dispensary?
Cannabis.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's not really the issue at hand here. The issue at hand is whether a municipal dispensary would be good for the community versus private dispensaries.
Knowing a 17-year-old who is having a serious addiction problem with vaping cannabis, there's no way that I believe that the county should be expanding, that we should be part of providing cannabis products to, to the community. But that's, this is not the place for the discussion, but.
Well, it's an interesting strategy, because the alternative is a private business providing that. And then the, the public does not benefit at all, you know? It's just money in the private's pocket and.
Makes a big difference to our 17-year-old addict, you bet. And he won't be the only one. I mean, it is just out there, it's available and so for us to be, it's, I just find it's morally suspect for the county to be, you can call it a business, but there aren't even any rules yet for cannabis, it's just there. And so, so does it require a county employee? I mean, there's so much questions for discussions.
Yeah, you might need an exploratory committee.
That's exactly what I was thinking. We need just a lot of discussion and I think about, you know, including a member of the school district. I think that's really important. I think it would be important to include someone from Sawtooth Mountain Clinic in the discussion, I think, to represent the business community, either small business or the EDA should have a seat at the table. I think it needs to be a very broad discussion.
Yeah, very, very good suggestions. I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I've just gotten a couple of messages from County Attorney Hickin, who wanted to note that we are prohibited by law from preventing sales that are allowed by state law. So, I mean, it, now that it's legal in the state, the county cannot stop it from being sold in Cook County. And then she also asked that she be included in the exploratory committee.
Absolutely.
Administrator Yorki?
Yes.
Did she say if the county would have exclusive rights to marketing cannabis? Or just that at this point, it's legal for anyone?
We, the county, Molly, are you still there on the phone?
Yeah, I answered that question. Hold on one second.
Yeah.
So we are authorized under the state statute to license, to license dispensaries beginning in 2025. And there are lots of different forms of ordinances that different municipalities in the state have passed to date. We haven't passed anything like that yet, but yes, we have controls over who is licensed, how they're licensed in the county, at least time, place and manner restrictions as to how the product may be sold, but we won't be able to completely prohibit, excuse me, if the state has authorized the sales, if that makes sense. And we, when we're licensing, we are able to restrict the number of licenses down to one within the county. And I haven't found to date any prohibition against a municipality holding that single license, rather than a private business. When you travel around the state, I was recently in St. Cloud and then I was also recently in southwest Minnesota. Commercial operations are already acquiring commercial leases and opening storefront, not opening storefronts, but putting up signage and marketing storefronts for dispensaries already. So commercial chain sellers of cannabis will be moving into Minnesota communities where they see profit opportunities. So I think that's partially related to why some municipalities are pursuing this. They see that the sellers are coming anyway and the proceeds will either go to a private seller or to a public entity. And I, I think they're looking at those potential revenue sources as potentially being able to reduce taxpayer burden. I'm not an advocate for it, I am only passing along what I hear discussed in other governments. I'm not an advocate for it, I am only passing along what I hear discussed in other governments.
Thanks, Molly.
Yeah. Um, uh, you know, one of the big concerns or, yeah, one of the big concerns is, is public health as far as legalization, um, tends to, um, bring normalization and, um, then youth, uh, or adults, youth and adult people, uh, tend to think of the harms as, uh, maybe not harmful at all. And that's an important part of this is that the education, the public education is so critical for our community. And I, I believe that if we had a captured audience with a municipal dispensary, we'd be in a better position to educate, um, versus a private entity I don't think is really required to, uh, to, to educate about, at least, at least not, not yet. But there's all, as you said, there's so much that needs to be developed from the state side of things. But, um, that's another reason why I would, I would advocate for municipal dispensaries for that education standpoint because, um, yeah, there's addiction out there, there's, uh, we're facing mental health crises and, um, substances are not the answer. It's, they're kind of filling a hole and, um, and, and that's just not a healthy thing. Um, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not against legalization, I just want people to know that there are harms with it as well. And, and, um, and just because it's legal doesn't mean it's completely safe. There are, um, safer ways to use, um, but abuse can still happen. And, um, and it's just, you know, but I hate, I hate to hear more stories like you're saying, Commissioner. It's, it's very real and devastating.
Well, right, particularly since as an honored role student, he's lost his scholarship, he's off the teams and maybe he'll be lucky to graduate. If he can get through this time, I mean, it's round two for him, seventeen. And all the education in the world doesn't, doesn't, I mean, you're a teenager.
Yeah, we won't be selling to teenagers, but, um, it's, it's important to know that they, that there's still that access. The more that's out there, the easier that access is, so. Yeah, it's, it's up to us to do as much as we can. It, it ties in a lot with, in my mind, the, the vaping increase with tobacco products, uh, in the schools, you know? That perception like, oh, this is smoke-free, so it's safe, right? Well, no, it changes your brain chemistry, you still get addicted, um, there's still harmful chemicals in the, the product and I think Commissioner Hopkins pointed to that with that public health, uh, training as far as the cannabis products. There, there's still chemical, other chemicals in there that are not regulated and, um, it's, it's, uh, it's not something to ignore. I think, I think this needs to be addressed as, as, uh, proactively as we can and just with that, uh, broad scope. I appreciate Attorney Hickin's two comment about the corporate side of things. Um, that is having, uh, that, that's kinda part of what the state was aiming for was to have more mom pop businesses type of thing, um, versus having, uh, you know, big tobacco or big marijuana come in and, um, you know, just open up shops at any opportunity they see for, for money. So, um, that's happening in other states or it's happened in other states and it's just this whole progression of, of things. So if we can learn from other states' challenges and, and do better, I think, I think we'll be better off, but.
I really like your idea of the exploratory, um-
Well, that was, that was Mayor Benson, yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
Glad you shared that though and I think it's a, a really good way to go. Administrator Yorki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note, um, after one of the recent board discussions, uh, at a, at a regular meeting about this issue, um, I was asked about it on WTIP. And after that, I got feedback from a local business owner. I'd made a statement about, you know, having, having a municipal dispensary increases likelihood that those revenues don't just leave the, the county, that they can be used here for beneficial purpose. And, uh, this business owner indicated that he'd already started putting together a business plan and that it's not necessarily true that, um, a privately owned dispensary, uh, would result in those revenues leaving the county.
Right.
Um, and this person further asked that if there are, you know, if we start to formalize this process rather than just having these discussions at the end of board meetings, um, they want to be aware of those meetings. I think you will be hearing from the business community. There are a lot of local businesses that already sell hemp-based THC products. Um, and it's a pretty lucrative product to sell. Um, and so, you know, as the county and the city explore the possibility of public ownership of a dispensary, I'm, I'm certain you're gonna hear from a lot of folks in the private sector that they want to be part of that conversation.
Absolutely, the chamber, I think, is where that, yeah. I'm guessing that, that particular, um, concern. It reminds me a little bit of, um, when brew pubs became legal. Um, I don't know about you guys, but everybody I knew was gonna open one. And, uh, it's not that easy. Uh, and those that have the means to do it, um, kinda already have the means. Um, so it's, uh, it, it, it wouldn't be leaving the county, but it wouldn't be benefiting the public is, is kinda my tact on it. I am, I am all ears for, for concerns and strategy there.
So just another follow-up question on that. So this exploratory committee would be a, a public, public meeting and the public could attend and listen to the discussion? Or?
I don't have any, I don't have any preconceptions.
Okay.
What, what is the board?
I think the exploratory should be open to everyone, not just somebody who has an expertise along with it, but I think everybody that's interested, put your cards on the table so we know where we're going.
Yeah.
I agree with her.
Anything else you'd like to share?
Not today, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Starley?
Um, I was able to attend a climate change symposium. It was sponsored by the University of Minnesota Extension down at the DECA a few Saturdays ago. Um, it was the upper Midwest one, so there was about fourteen states represented there. And, um, I'll give you an update that Southern Ohio is now growing banana plants.
Wow.
So it's moving north. And yesterday, at our extension meeting, David de Vos gave us a whole list, I hope we get that, of trees that we should be planting now that will be more, uh, climate adaptable to our area, but that was just an interesting thing. So the symposium workshop that I went to consisted of meteorologists and folks from, um, different parts of the country, uh, Wisconsin, Minnesota, we were well represented by meteorologists from Duluth all the way down to Minneapolis. And, um, and then a, uh, a presentation by a person who said we need to watch our CO2 and, uh, invest in electric cars, which we know probably up here may be a challenge. But, um, and now we're finding out, you know, what's happening in Iceland. There may be a whole village that will be wiped out because of the melting there and just, it was just a, a wonderful day to be with everybody and talk about the same thing that we're all concerned about, which is our climate.
Any other meetings?
That's my big one.
Okay, great. Well, um, I had an opportunity to participate in, um, one of the sessions with Care Partners recently and they, um, went to several locations throughout Cook County. Also did a Zoom meeting last Friday collecting information on how to be more age-friendly and really ties in with some of the remarks you made, Commissioner White. And I was really appreciative that on their day off, um, Andrea Tofte, Allison McIntyre and Andrea Orest helped to facilitate those, um, breakout sessions and really appreciate their involvement with Care Partners. It's really important and it takes multiple agencies to address all the needs that we have. Um, I had an opportunity to go to Ely for the Rainy River Vermilion River One Watershed One Plan and we have, um, finalized our draft plan. It's on the North St. Louis County ESTA CD, um, website and it's undergoing public comment right now, um, for sixty days. And then January twenty-sixth, there will be a public hearing and that'll be from ten to twelve in Ely at, um, Vermilion College and there will also be a Zoom option for those in Cook County. And that Zoom option will take place up at the SAG Seagull Community Center. Elena Hansel will manage that portion of, um, the meeting. And it really affects, um, the Cross River, Loon Lake, Gunflint Lake, SAG and Seagull, just the end of the Gunflint Trail, that's the water that flows westward and eventually gets up to Lake of the Woods and such. Um, but it's really a well-done plan and so I would, um, really encourage people in the community, particularly those that live in that watershed, um, to take a look at the plan and be engaged in the public hearing and, uh, send in comments at this point in time after reviewing the plan. But it's, um, a plan that engages multiple counties, um, boys for it, the eighteen fifty-four treaty, um, and it's very comprehensive. And just kudos to all the water planners, including Elena, for the work they've done and kind of the measurement that, um, will be taken and the way that we can look at that plan over a ten-year period and also flex during the plan, during the ten-year implementation at the five-year mark, there's a chance to go back and review. And there's a possibility that the MPCA will, um, change their standards for sulfites and, um, go with tribal standards, which are higher. And so it gives us that point in time to say, oh, we're gonna make a change here, we're gonna up our standards, we're gonna do some things differently depending on what the MPCA goes with. So I like that flexibility built into the plan, but it's a, a great cooperative effort. And, uh, again, January twenty-sixth will be the public hearing on that.
Commissioner, will you send us a reminder of?
I surely will, I will send that out, yeah. And then, um, let's see, Cook County Coalition of Lakes met recently and, um, is really working to cooperate with the county and looking at septics and other kinds of issues that may impact groundwater and, uh, the water that's in our lakes, which many people use for drinking water. So I really appreciate their work and, um, if people aren't aware, they made a public announcement. Um, you'll recall that, um, KGM was interested in putting up off the Caribou Trail an asphalt plant and, and, um, looking at digging into that escar. And, um, a group of people at Tate Lake has purchased that property from KGM.
Oh.
And so there will be no more work there done at all. And, um, so anyway, I did want to, uh, announce that to the group that that has occurred. Um, and then the last thing, just, we had a great Veterans Day program at school last Ju-, uh, Friday. And, uh, Ty Backlund, our deputy, was the individual who, you know, it was nice to have an alumni there to speak, um, to the kids and the community, but it was, um, really a nice, robust program. Lots of community members attending. Um, they had the program last year, but because of COVID, it was still a little small, but it seemed to be kinda back to normal. And then, of course, there were meals provided by Jean's Foods on Friday and then Saturday, um, by the Auxiliary and the American Legion. So our veterans, um, were well-recognized and I appreciate Operation Green Light and what Karen Christensen and our county attorney's office did to keep that green light on, pass out green light bulbs and show our support for veterans. And those would be all the meetings that I've had of recent. Um, we have a number of meetings coming up, a lengthy list, so we have a very busy November and December will be quite compact as well. And now we move on to recognition of staff. At the Law Enforcement Center, Ally Iverson and Angelie Coleman, one and two years respectively. I appreciate their service. Anna Ross with PHHS for four years and also with PHHS Nancy Demming, who's been leading, um, the charge with childcare. So we greatly appreciate their work. Ben Hadley with four years and Paul Ben-, um, or excuse me, Steve Olson with the Highway Department, four years and three years respectively. Jimmy Wallner with Maintenance, nine years, so almost a decade helping us. And then at the Recycling Center, Paul Bernier and Rick Sturm, uh, four years and twenty-eight years for Rick. That's just amazing. And we have some milestone anniversaries, um, with PHHS, Grace Granager, five years. Busy at home taking care of those two new twins. Jesse Backstrom with the Highway Department, ten years. And also ten years at the Highway Department, Norris Kleckstedt. And Joe Ruth, Land Services, fifteen years. So we appreciate all those years of service, it's amazing. We have some correspondence at the end of our agenda and with that is their motion to adjourn.
Till move.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley, I was looking at the clock and that I know. So we have a motion, is there a second? Second, thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Molly.
I'm a question, I was thinking, while they were looking for a motion there.